Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start the May 12th, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting for Lake County. We can go ahead and call it to order at 9:00 a.m. To start with, we have, as usual, a moment of silence. And today, we're gonna give a moment of silence for the family of... Or Bruno, if you want to do it, you brought it up, go ahead.
Just to the family of one of our staff members who's going through some hard times. I'd rather not give names or give any specifics, but some of us are going through hard times. So at this moment, we have a staff member who needs our moment of silence.
Okay, EJ, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please, Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. Yes. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Constitution of the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go right into our... For our timed items, item 4.1. Public... Yeah, 4.1, public input. Do we have any public input, Carol? On items that are not appearing on the agenda?
We did not receive email public input for today's meeting, but you should ask the room.
Okay, we'll go ahead and ask the room then. Do you have any public input on items that are not appearing on today's agenda? Jake, can you go ahead and open the room?
Yes, one second here. All right, the room is unneeded. If you would like to make a comment, please start with your first and last name.
And you can see it's kind of starting to max out right there.
Okay, Jake, you're none, go ahead and close it up.
All right.
Okay, moving on to our item 4.2, our 9:02 a.m. item, which we're one minute ahead, is consideration of updates on COVID-19. Today, we have Dr. Gary Pace and also Health Services, our Dr. Gary Pace. Go ahead, Dr. Gary Pace.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Chairman.
Good morning.
We're gonna talk today, so I'm gonna give a brief overview, and then we're gonna go into a presentation about the proposal to... For a variance to accelerate the opening process in the county. So the overview this morning is basically, in California, the situation continues about the same. There's a fairly high number of deaths throughout California, approximately 500 a week now. And over the last few weeks, which is fairly significant, even though in some places it's getting better, some places getting a little worse. Genoa County is getting between five and 15 new cases a day. They had a fourth death, I believe it was yesterday or the other day. Napa County also had a death the other day. And so I think it's important to recognize that we are still having ongoing infection, ongoing hospitalizations, ongoing deaths, even in the county, which is right next door. This last week, we changed the orders around so that basically we aligned the county orders, the public health orders in the county with the state orders, with the governor's orders, and essentially everything is the same. We also, on Friday, the governor opened up and allowed us to move into stage two, and we'll talk some about the different stages as the whole state. Everybody was able to move into stage two, which is the stage where you can start opening low-risk retail businesses. The first step of that was to allow some specific retail businesses that were outlined to open for telephone and online ordering, and then do curbside pickup. We also, in the county, to as kind of in alignment with the governor's orders, is we removed any restrictions on the waterways in the county. So the lake and the other associated waterways were opened up to boating and fishing and other activity as long as people follow the shelter-in-place orders, which means not coming in from out of the area, and also maintain social distancing. So it seems like over the weekend, it was fairly crowded, but for the most part, it seems like people did well and were maintaining social distancing for the most part. The question's gonna be now, as we start relaxing the restrictions, is what happens with the cases in the area? We've stayed stable, we don't have any new cases since last week, and we've continued testing, and we've now done over 1,000 tests. But what's gonna happen in a week or two now from the opening from this past weekend is really the big question. There's gonna be more mixing, there's more people coming in from out of the area, even though we asked them not to come. And, you know, I think we're gonna have to be watching that closely, so this is gonna be part of the discussion later on. The... So I think the other piece of this, just to remind everybody, is all the cases that we've had in the county have recovered. And I think it's important for people to recognize that once they're taken off isolation, they are not contagious. They've never been able to grow virus on people after they've been taken off the isolation, if we followed the right protocol. So, you know, if you know of somebody that was positive for COVID and now they're off and they're doing fine, you really don't need to worry. If anything, they're probably safer because they're probably immune at this point. So I want to talk just a little bit about testing, and then we'll go into the whole presentation. We've done over, like I said, we've done over 1,000 tests. Last week, we... Last week, we... The public health started putting up some drive-through testing platforms. We've been working with the state to try to get some in, it's been a lot slower than we had hoped. So we just, the staff basically just stepped up and put the... Put two testing sites up last week in Lakeport. Each one tested 45 to 50 people. Some of it was public health staff, it was volunteers from Lakeport Police Department, from the Chief Sepeda, and so the EMTs helped. So it was kind of a group effort, and we really appreciate the willingness of everybody to do this because this is a little bit, you know, it's been needed, the state wasn't able to help in time, and so we just started doing it. We're also gonna do two more of these, ones today and ones tomorrow in Clear Lake. If people want to get an appointment, you go onto the public health website, and you can get on and get screened and get an appointment in that way. Starting Thursday, we are hoping that we're gonna have an ongoing test site through this company called VeriOy, and they're supposed to be putting up a mobile site six days a week in the county. It'll be, right now, the site's gonna be three days a week in Clear Lake, three days a week in Lakeport. It's an RV that they're gonna be setting up. And it's the same kind of thing, you go on and fill out a screening form and get an appointment to come in. They can do up to 100 to 125 tests a day, which is gonna be a big help for us. You can still get them through your medical provider, but this is gonna allow us to get the volume that we really need to move forward. The last piece of this, and the kind of the introduction, is I just wanted to mention about the jail. The jail did have a case that was picked up a week or so ago, and we've done some extensive investigations in there, contact tracing, a lot more testing of anybody that had any contact with this person, and everything looks like it's turned negative. So we really appreciate working with Captain Taylor and his people and the Well Path staff. And we, you know, basically, it looks like it was contained, and we're not gonna have a jail outbreak, which is really good. So we put in some other surveillance kind of testing possibilities and other kinds of mechanisms to keep an eye on the jail so that we can catch any infected people early on. So hopefully, this was a lucky chance to kind of put in some more measures to help prevent all that from happening. So the big thing here now, right now, is the struggle around the country and around the state around how to open safely and protect people, how to kind of walk this balance between economic and social activity and keeping people safe. So we just moved into this stage two on Friday, and rural counties that have been really pushing for more flexibility and ability to move faster, the governor put in this mechanism into his plan that allows for that to happen. Basically, what needs to happen is any county that wants what they call a variance, which is what we're gonna ask for, it needs to kind of go through this whole proposal where you basically list benchmarks that are mainly public health benchmarks to ensure that if you do get a surge in cases, that you have the ability to test those people, to take care of them in the hospitals, to have to protect the healthcare workers with adequate PPE, and then to do contact tracing and isolate the people. So it's really a mechanism so that as we start loosening things up, that we are able to prevent a big surge from happening. Or if we do recognize that there's getting to be some problems, that we can put more restrictions back on and prevent it from getting out of control. That's the whole point of this, from the public health part. The other part is more of the business part, which is how do you open businesses that are in a way that's safe, that protects the workers, that protects the public, and allows for proper social distancing in the facility, et cetera. So we are in the process of putting together a proposal like this, and we're gonna, we have a pretty in-depth, pretty detailed presentation today that Denise, the Health Service Director, and myself are gonna sort of share, going back and forth with. And so hopefully, it's not too boring because there's a lot of detail in it. But I think it's the kind of thing that people are gonna have a lot of specific questions about, about what's happening here. In my opinion, the right way to do this is to have this presentation today, to have, hear everybody's discussion, and then to start, we've done a lot of the work, as you'll see as we go, but it's not completely done yet. And I'm sort of aiming for about two weeks from now that we could move to the next stage, to submit our proposal probably in a week or so to the state and give them a couple days to work on it. And then hopefully, within two weeks, we'll be ready to go forward. And that gives us enough time to see what happens from this past weekend. Are we gonna start seeing a surge in cases? Is, are the hospitals gonna start getting choked and that we are not really able to manage it? Because I don't really want to open things up and then a week later, shut them back down. That's kind of counterproductive. But if we can go slowly and carefully and thoughtfully, we hopefully can manage this and keep an eye on things and kind of open the door a little bit at a time. Let's see, the couple pieces that are kind of important in this that aren't necessarily part of the specific proposal is as we move forward with this accelerated opening, I want to make masking mandatory in the businesses. So I want to make this part of the process, that workers in the business need to wear a mask, and the patrons that go into the business need to wear masks. I'm not that interested in making masks mandatory when people are taking a walk or something like that, although I think it's a good idea. But inside these small businesses, as we relax the restrictions and people have more mixing, we need to put some other things in place to protect the other folks. And so masking is gonna be part of that. The other part is enforcement. Basically, what we're doing here is we're gonna be asking the businesses to follow a plan. We're not going to be approving or disapproving of the plan. If a business is in the category that can open in phase two, once we start moving to this accelerated opening, will... They need to go ahead and get the requirements and kind of a document that they have a plan for all these things, and then post it by the door. And if we start getting complaints, if the public starts calling us and saying like, you know, so-and-so's not... Their workers aren't wearing masks, or they're not, or they're letting a bunch of people in that don't have masks on, then we'll, we'd like to basically set it up so that environmental health or some other county workers can go out and pay them a visit and just educate and sort of talk about the reason for this and how to do it. And, you know, to have a process where we can sort of stepwise move it up. The interest is not really in finding people or getting money from this, but if they're not willing to comply with education, then we may need to put some of that in. So I think as we move forward with this acceleration plan, I'm gonna want to move forward with an order that has two pieces in it. One is the masking requirement, and the other is some outline about enforcement and the stepwise enforcement with education first and then fines. So because these things aren't going to work, we're not gonna be able to keep the public safe if people don't comply. And, you know, this is sort of a process where, sort of looking at it kind of like environmental health when they go investigate a restaurant, and the food quality's not right, then they can do some things about that. And that's sort of how we want to do this. And I think also, like Supervisor Sabate said last week, if people recognize that certain places aren't as safe as others, I would strongly suspect that they will be going to the places that they feel safer in. So I think, oh, and then the last piece of this is the process we're gonna be working on is putting this forward today, and then we have this working group that's been meeting weekly that has some of the government leaders for the county and for the cities and the schools. And what I would like us to do is to, tomorrow, when we meet, is to look through this and kind of start really framing this moving forward. You know, we have people in the public health office that are very interested and capable of kind of making this into a plan, but we need to have some guidance with some of the leaders in the community. I'm, you know, the health person, but I don't know anything about businesses. And so I'm really working on what we, kind of the guardrails that we do to keep people safe, but to allow more activity, but we need to kind of step forward. I really think the way this will look is there's probably gonna be two more steps in phase two. So we're in stage two right now, the very beginning. Stage three is when you go to more higher-risk businesses, and we'll go into some of this a little bit later, where there's more contact and, you know, it's a little more looser. The governor will not allow us move into stage three until, at this point, we all have to be in stage two. But once they approve the plan, we can be at different places throughout the state in stage two. So I would suggest that we have a two-step process through stage two. We're in one state, we're in the very beginning now. Like, in about two weeks, we move to stage two. So we move to a second step of stage two, and then we see how it goes for at least a couple weeks then. And then we move to the third part, which is basically opening all the things in stage two that are available. That's my thought. That's something we can talk about today or in the meeting tomorrow, however that works out best. So that's kind of my quick overview. Let me just make sure I, yeah, I think that was everything I wanted to kind of do in setting it up. And then if, I think Denise has a screen that she wanted to share. I'm not sure how you're gonna do this, but we have a whole PowerPoint presentation that we would like to just walk through to show everybody this. And then at the end, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions. But you might as well wait until we go through the presentation.
Hi, Dr. Pace, I'm pulling it up now.
Hi, Denise.
So Jake, you've given her the right to show her screen?
Yeah, yeah, she should be.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, can everybody see it?
Yeah, I can see.
Yes, I can see it. Okay, so this is, so basically, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna sort of set up some of these. And then Denise is, she's really, she's a finance person, but she's also the director of the Health Department and is very good with some of the more specific measures and details. So I'll kind of set things up, and then she'll go to the specifics, and then we'll kind of go back and forth. If you have specific questions about one of the slides, maybe we can talk about that. But I think the bigger questions probably makes more sense to wait till the end because, you know, this kind of flow, there's a certain flow. So this is basically the requirements. This is from the state, from the California Department of Public Health. And this is Ayesha Miller, and was working on this a lot, and so she did a great job on this. And so we'll, this is the overview of the different stages, first off. So this is the four stages that the governor has set up. The first stage that we just left was safety and preparedness. You can see what some of that, but that's basically getting everybody ready. The testing and contact tracing, these are the things we've been doing the last couple months. And so we've been paying attention, this is kind of what some of the specifics were. And then just Friday, we moved into stage two, which is allowing lower-risk workplaces as defined by the state to open. And we, this is where we don't have any real control over what's in stage two. The governor has decided this. We can kind of argue with them sometimes, and people are doing that fairly regularly. But, and then the first step is gradually opening some lower-risk workplaces, mainly retail, the manufacturing that supports that, some offices, and some more public spaces. And then expanding the workforce safety net, so go ahead. And then these are the early stage two is on the left side, that's what we're in now. And then the expanded stage two is on the right, and these are the things that we will be talking about in the plan that we come up with on how to open these. And again, I would suggest we think about doing this as a two-step process. For example, dining restaurants, number four. I would suggest that the first step be something like outdoor dining with social distancing and masking. And then if that goes okay for at least two weeks, then we can look to going to indoor dining with social distancing with a certain number of people that are allowed in, or something like that. So we, rather than just going too fast and we end up regretting it because there's a big surge in cases and we have to go pull back on things, this would be the two-step phase. These are the things that are not allowed in stage two. So you can just look, the personal services, which has been a big interest in the county, bars and lounges, concert venues, religious services. These are all hospital, hotels and lodging for leisure and tours. And these are all not on the table now for stage two, they'll have to wait till stage three. Here's the overview of stage three, higher-risk workplaces, and then stage four is the end, when we get back to normal. Go ahead. So now, this is basically what we have to do to set up the proposal to the state for stage two. So here, the roadmap was released, we can apply for a local variance now. And I'm of the opinion that, you know, Trinity County is a little different than Lake County because we have these recent deaths in the two neighboring counties. And I think that's very important because there's a lot of back and forth across these counties. So to me, what we're trying to do here is open slowly but carefully and watching the response. So each step, and then we wait two weeks to see if we get a bump in cases. And if we do, can we still manage it? And we'll go into a little bit the triggers. But it's very important to be aware of the fact that we may have to go backwards if things start spinning out. And so these are the steps for applying. Well, Denise, why don't you go ahead, you can talk about this part.
Okay, so we have already notified CDPH of our county intent to seek a variance. We have had our technical meeting with them yesterday. The acetation has to be certified through Dr. Pace, the health officer has to do it. And then letters of support that have to go with it is one from the county board of supervisors, and then one from each of our local hospitals indicating that they also feel that the county is ready to move forward and agree.
So part of, one of the important points on that one is just that it's actually on me. I'm the one that basically attests to it and says we're ready, and the board of supervisors are in support of it. So it's, you know, if it's good or bad, it's on me. And, but the board has to be in agreement that we should move forward. But I'm basically saying what's safe enough to move forward. So here's the criteria, and we're gonna go through each one of these. But basically, the overview is that the first few are to make sure that if we do, that things are stable and that if we do start getting some cases, that we have the ability to manage the cases. And then the last, the sector and timeline is sort of the plan. And then the last one is the trigger. So what we would, what will trigger us to end up putting more restrictions back on or to go back to the complete shelter-in-place strategy? So this is the first case, and so Denise, you can go. This is basically showing that we are doing okay in terms of the number of cases in the county.
Right, so the last page with all of the different triggers we have to meet within the plan and attest to. So the first one is, you know, no... So we can have up to eight, we've already met this criteria at this time. We have a low infection rate, we only have eight cases, deaths reported. And based upon the one case per 10,000, we could have up to seven cases within that 14 days and still qualify. So we feel like we're in compliance with this request, this trigger. The next one is we have to provide guidance to the essential critical workforce in the places, and we have to have the ability of supplies, disinfectant gear, protect the essential workers. Again, we feel like we meet this criteria, we've developed all of the forms for businesses to open, that they write their plan, and they do their social distancing document, they self-certify the plan, that they will meet those criterias. We have all of the links to the CDC and CDPH on our website, where all the different businesses can find out what that means for their type of business. We are still getting supplies through the Mohawk for the health industry piece of this, and I think that will continue for quite some while. Part of this is due because the normal supply chain that businesses would get their supplies from are low because the state is acquiring the majority of that. And then we're actively monitoring the supply chain to make sure that people can get what they need. So testing capacity, we have to do 1.5 per 1,000 residents. So that's about 100 tests per day, and so about 700 a week. The testing availability means the sites that we have, not the ability to test. So the locations, and for a rural county, we have to have a site within 60 minutes' drive of where the person lives. And then we have to list all of those specimen collection sites in the county, which we already are working on. We have a map that we've started, we don't have everything on there. We are currently working with our local hospitals, clinics, and tribal health, and this new company, VeriOy, that will be here at the end of the week. We have a map, which will be on the next screen. Public health has ramped up our mobile testing last week and this week, and we will continue with the drive-to testing. The drive-through testing, starting next week or the end of this week, will be handled by VeriOy with support and oversight of public health. And that VeriOy should be able to do 100 to 125 tests per day. So this criteria is we have to have the capacity to do that amount of tests, not necessarily that we are needing that requirement. Like, we may not have 700 people in a week that willingly want to be tested. The requirement is we have to have the capacity to do that. So we will meet that capacity starting next week. Here are our sites right now. Adventist Hospital, Sutter Hospital, Health Services Mobile Site, the Health Services Department, Lake County, Tribal Health. And then VeriOy Mobile Testing Site will be in Clear Lake, Lakeport, and we are still working on the site for Middletown. In addition to this, what we don't currently have tagged on this map, which we will have by the time we submit the plan, are all the clinics that are also, and the labs that are ordering tests. So we will clearly meet that 75% with a 60-minute drive. Then public health, because there are people who can't get out and drive, maybe there's some somatic or they just don't drive. The ability to, public health will continue our drive-to testing, where our nurse goes out to people's houses. where our nurse goes out to people's homes and tests them where they, where they're at. The containment capacity, um so this um allows for us to be able to contain the amount of cases in the county and to work through those cases. So we have to have 15 trained contact tracing staff per 100,000 population. When you break that down into the numbers, that we have to have 10.5 um people trained to do contact tracing. We have 20 trained, so we are well above meeting this criteria. We have 15 volunteers, which are MRC trained, um MPH and nursing students. And then we have five public health um nurses um and staff that are trained. Uh we have to describe the tracing plan and that is under development at this time. The plan is almost finished. So within a week, we should have that ready to go as well. Um the availability to temporarily housing units, sheltering at least 15% of county residents experiencing homelessness. This was a tricky one. We didn't think we were going to meet this based upon the verbiage. But then after our technical assistance meeting with the state yesterday, um they clarified that it's 15% of um not, it can be more than just homelessness. So homelessness has to be included in that. Um so with our last pit count, we had 572, which means uh we needed to have like uh 90 beds, I think. And right now, uh oh 86, sorry, we re-calculated. So 572 um times 15% is 86. Currently, we have the um capacity to support 89 beds. So um after we got a little more clearance from the state, we now meet this criteria, which is important because this was one we were concerned about. So that was very um encouraging news yesterday. Um hospital capacity, the hospitals, both hospitals have to um be able to do a minimum surge of 35% um due to COVID-19 cases while providing their usual care for non-COVID um 19 patients. And the hospitals have a robust plan um for their workforce, clinical, non-clinical with PPE. So we, we're very um confident that we meet that criteria. We're confident in the both hospitals being able to meet the 35% surge. We are um going to be working with them to get copies of their plans um and along with their letters of support that verify they can meet that 35% surge um and that they support the county moving forward. So the vulnerable populations, this one um is something that needs a little bit of work, um but we've already started. The skilled nursing facilities, so we have three in Lake County um that have the congregant living for vulnerable populations. They must have a greater than 14-day supply of PPE on hand for staff. Um they do that right now. We, it was our logistics um chief, Dean, is tracking that. And we are comfortable that they currently have 14-day supply. In addition to that, they have to be able to establish a process for ongoing purchasing of um PPE supplies from non-state supply chain. So not going through the Mohawk. And, and we are going to be doing some documentation um to indicate uh to the state why that, why that's not reasonable at this time because their normal supply chains are being bought up by the state to come back down through the Mohawk. So that is in their plans. We're working on them um to uh have clear documentation to show the state that we are able to do this once the state kind of stops buying up all the supplies and, and pushing them back out through us. And then we have to list the names, you know, of the um NIS and the contacts, which we already have. Uh so sectors and timelines. Um with this is the plan. This is what we are going to want assistance um for sure with leadership on the recovery work group. Um we need to do a detailed plan on which sectors and spaces will be opened, in what sequence and on what timeline. Uh we need to indicate if our plan differs from the state order in any way. And, and then we have to provide the details on stage two sectors, businesses, establishment, um activities that are considered low risk. So here are the activities on the right that are defined. Um and so we need to go through and detail out which of those we feel are low risk, medium risk, maybe the higher risk. And then in what order will we open them and to what extent will they open? And so this will be a project with the recovery work group that um has uh leaders from throughout the county um to do. Some things on here were already open. There was some real uh miscommunication and unclear guidance from the governor's uh site. So we opened pet grooming and landscaping uh like a week ago. Um the, the car washes refer to the um hand car washes more that you see in the cities where the, you know, there's actually people washing your car versus the um drive-through ones that we have here in our county. So a little different there. Um so this one is um something that Dr. Pace has been working on um over the weekend. So we have to define our matrix. Um so this is how we transition, how we expand and how we contract. Um and this plan determines what will trigger that um within our um county. Uh we have to notify, of course, the um to CDPH any emerging concerns. So if we start to see a surge or a pocket within a vulnerable population, you know, how will we uh keep the state informed of that? Um and this plan, um we're, we're already identified, um which we're going to go through following slides. Um we'll see if we need to modify it as we go through our review process with the state. So not allowed in stage two. We went over this earlier. Um these are the things that we will not be able to open in stage two um as we are, are aligned with the um state at this time. And it's, it's concerning. As we know, we, we understand um it's hard. We, whether we agree with it or not, this is what the governor's plan does. We are not allowed to do at this time. So the triggers for modification, Dr. Pace, do you want to take these since you did them?
Sure, I can do this. Um okay. So basically, these are kind of the, the different buckets of uh what we're looking at to see if things are getting worse. Then we would need to slow forward movement or add more restrictions or go back to um a shelter in place order. So these are the epidemiological stability. So that's basically if the number of cases or the number of deaths start rising, we would need to reconsider availability of supplies to protect the healthcare workers. Testing capacity, if the testing ability gets overwhelmed and we're not able to keep up with the need, um containment capacity. So this is really if the, you know, if we're unable, if there's 10 cases that come out and our contact tracing abilities get overwhelmed or our ability to help people stay home or our ability to keep people, like if people need to isolate, but they don't have a good home to do that in, all the rooms get filled up and we don't have the ability to do that. These are, if that gets overwhelmed, we would need to back things down, hospital capacity and then the vulnerable populations. But skilled nursing, but I think it's also if we get outbreak in the jail or the homeless facilities or the farm workers, we have to think about that as well. So these are the kind of things, these are the measures I'll be looking at to see if we can keep moving forward or not. You can go to the next slide. And so this is sort of the way I was thinking about it. If you look at the action part, green light, yellow light, red light and slam on the brake. Basically, if we're stable or improving the top line, then everything keeps moving along and we can continue on our plan. If things are stable, but there's some concerning metrics, especially uh in the high priority ones, if the cases go up or the uh capacity um of the testing uh gets overwhelmed, then we would need to basically go to a yellow light, which means caution. We stop moving forward. And we may, may need more to look at the data more closely or get more data before we consider what to do. Then if things are, the third line here, things are worsening, if the cases, the deaths are increasing or we start getting some clusters that we are having trouble keeping on top of, uh then we would go to a red light, which means stop. And we would probably put some other restrictions back in place. And then the last one is if things get really bad and the deaths start shooting up and things, then we would go back to the shelter in place order. I think the, the bottom line here is that we know the shelter in place works or we, we think it works because of the response that's happened here and watching around the country and around the world. And so those are the tools we can put in place. If we loosen up and put in this thing like the masking and some of the social distancing can stay in place and we keep people from traveling around a lot, maybe we're going to do fine and just stay on the top line. If we don't, this is kind of what we're looking at, is potentially putting more restrictions back in place or going back to a complete um shelter in place situation. So go ahead.
So yeah, okay, thanks. So the CDPH guidance, we have to provide details on our plan um for the county to move forward and opening factor spaces. There's two parts of the um, that's a part of the state plan for stage two. Uh the recovery work group is already established, so um we're grateful that we did this about a month ago. And then, you know, we need to develop this section of the plan. Um so then an additional section, it's not mandatory, but it's strongly recommended, is that we have a containment plan. So how are we going to contain and manage the uh, the COVID-19 as we go through, you know, summer and fall and, and into winter? Uh we are currently in construction of that plan right now. Uh we're, we're collaborating with the established work group to identify any gaps. Uh we will, we're working on our increased capacity testing, which will start next week. Uh we are meeting the contact tracing criteria at this time. And we're actively monitoring neighboring counties and regional hospital capacities. So this is something that we'll work on. Um we, we probably won't have it ready by the time we send in our accretion to move forward. But we should have this plan completely ready in two weeks. So we're moving along. And that's the end of it. So we can open it up. I can leave it up.
Well, thank you Denise. So I just want to say one more thing. So thanks. Um and uh is that basically we um, so I think the timeline that we're proposing here is that we work on getting a, a solid draft together by next Tuesday at the board meeting so that you all can see it and we can talk about it. And um, and if, if the uh statistics stay good and we're able to kind of, we continue to look stable in terms of the um presence of the infection and our ability to respond in the community and the whole testing site thing is up and running and we get going with that, then um what, we would talk about it next Tuesday. We'd make some adjustments. We'd submit it probably by the end of next week. And that uh with the idea that we could be ready uh by the following week to go into the first part of this uh, this accelerated opening. That's kind of the sketch we're, we're thinking about. And in the process of that, there would be an order associated that would have a mandatory masking in the stores and would also have some kind of enforcement um uh uh sort of uh framework for that. So um that's kind of the proposal here in front of everybody and I'm sure there's a lot of questions and thoughts. So that's good.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Um supervisor or Chair Simon, do you want me to leave this up sharing so we can go back to pages people want? Or do you want me to close it?
I know that in the past he was struggling to find his mute button.
Oh yeah, no, just forgot it was on mute. Just forgot it was on mute. Go ahead and um, yeah, take it off of, take it off.
Okay.
I think the, the board members uh, I think they should have it emailed to us. I think our emails uh should be in there. So. Getting a little feedback when we're talking. Okay.
Is, is the room muted except for the board right now, given that we're getting some background noise?
Yeah, it looks like that's a little bit of echo from uh Dr. Pace's.
Okay.
Oh, I think.
All mute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Brown?
I just wanted to add one thing. Um so in my communication with Quest, um to try to see if there's more testing done by them so to save people a trip to Santa Rosa, Heelsburg or any of their other locations. I did find out from the manager in Lakeport that they're scheduled to reopen that, that uh um facility on the 26th of this month. So two weeks from today, hopefully they'll be offering tests and they do the COVID test, antibody test and all the other tests that they typically do.
Yeah, hopefully by then too, we'll have our, Verily will be set up. There's going to be, done a great job. I want to thank um everybody like Dr. Pace said, who put the testing together on the county level. I want to thank everyone who had a part in that um from public health, environmental health, uh all the staffing, volunteers, EMS, Willie Spada. I do want to just say thank you very much and great job in working out the Verily. Um testing is one of the big things. So I know Supervisor Shavati, I know you had some questions with slides we're going through, so I'll go to you next.
Uh thank you very much. Uh I appreciate uh the level of detail that's already there for the um uh application to submit over to the state. Uh I think we're all excited about moving forward and having a bit more control on our end without feeling like we're um uh going against any laws or rules that we're told to abide to. And I think that's, that's very exciting to start that kind of conversation. Uh I'm also excited that, that the, the letter that we approved on April 21st, I think it was, is almost exactly to the T what the governor is doing. Uh I know Supervisor Scott brought up public health benchmarks. That's exactly what we have in front of us that we need to follow up with. Uh and, and that we get to make our own decisions and that we have also our own criteria of uh what's, what, what do we want to see to move forward again? Or what do we need to see in order to say, hey, maybe we did something wrong? Um I will say, I am willing to put whatever, and I know there's work that needs to be done. And I know that the testing has to be there in order for us to meet some of those benchmarks. And I'm really hoping that that's going to happen on Thursday with Verily. It's looking like it's moving forward. Um it's been an arduous travel to get to the part where testing is going to happen here. It feels like we were forgotten on the list of California until we raised our voices and we finally got uh recognition that we needed to get some help. And so getting Verily over here, I think is, is, is um uh something we should uh look at is it just didn't happen. It, we, we kind of forced it to happen here so that we can meet that benchmark. So appreciate the hard work on that too. But I, I am willing to do any amount of special meetings that we need to do. I think on Tuesday, yes, we need to review what's hopefully the somewhat final draft without uh potentially any changes that we uh discuss. Uh but I would love to get that approved either that Tuesday, that Wednesday, uh depending on obviously how many uh changes are going to happen. Uh but I would love to submit that to the state as soon as possible. Um and again, I'm willing to do any kind of special meeting to say, yes, let's move forward on it. Uh so obviously we need to wait so that we can get those benchmarks taken care of. The testing is one of those things. Then we need to make sure the application is complete. But uh after Tuesday, I want to try to see what we could do to get it out there as soon as possible. And maybe I'm not comprehending the workload that goes behind any updates, but I'm hoping that we can uh be as close to final on Tuesday uh so that we can submit that in. Um there's, you said 35% surge in the hospital. Do you mean in comparison to the 25 beds that they have? That there's a, they need to be prepared for 35% more? Uh it doesn't have a reference as to what 35% means. I was uh trying to figure out what that specifically meant.
Uh my understanding is we meet that no problem. The, the hospitals have good surge planning and it's, they, they, basically it's from their normal workload to be able to take 35% more. And both of the hospitals have at more than enough of that. So I think that's not going to be an issue.
Now, we've, we've had the opportunity to prepare for a surge uh for a long time and we've been waiting for it. Luckily, it has not happened. Um so no, it's good to know that, that uh we're ready for that. There was something else on here. Um in, in, in the, in the plan, um I know we've discussed this before. in in the in the in the plan, um I know we've discussed this before, that in cities and counties, just any jurisdiction, what we're finding is population density uh has definitely been a factor in helping reduce the spread. And I'm wondering if that can be implemented for businesses. So let's say you have a five thousand square foot business, but you only get maybe five, ten customers an hour. Uh that would show you the customer density. And maybe that can make it easier for those to go through in stage two than than others where you might need to look at more specific um criteria for them to meet. A good example is somebody who's been calling me and I I know you've uh interacted with, which is Dan Griffin, who owns Griffin's Furniture. He's got a very large store, but on an hourly basis, he doesn't have fifty people in his store uh constantly. And so to see the square footage with the low uh uh amount of um uh number, it's not a grocery store where it's constant or anything like that. Um maybe that can be the helpful uh trigger to help some of our other uh businesses to be able to open. Because I think that some of the stuff that's been put at the latter end of stage two, for us, it doesn't quite fit that same criteria than it would. Again, this is a statewide stage two idea, but for us, it doesn't always work out like that. It's a it's a it's a different population density, which means we also have a different client density in our, so maybe something like that to be looked at. Um I I, you know, I I have been vocal about the uh masking. Uh but at the same time, if that's something that we need to put together in order to make it so that we can move forward in opening, and especially if it's just in the businesses where you're in enclosed area, uh then I will change my voice and say that I'm perfectly fine with that because I'm 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 more into the idea of being safe and being open uh than not being able to open and and also not providing a a good um um example of what safe is like as well. So those are my comments for now.
Supervisor Scott.
Good morning. I'd just like to thank Dr. Pace and Denise for putting this um plan together. I think it really shows that it's going to be the public and our community doing the right thing to let us continue moving on to the next phases. Um I think that one slide that you had uh triggers for adjusting modifications. I think that makes it very clear that it's on us to make sure we're doing the right thing, wearing our mask, doing the six-foot distancing. Um and if we don't do those things, this is what's going to happen, that we'll have to start rolling things back. So I would like to see that slide um put out to our public um for them to be aware that that it's clearly on us doing the right thing. Um I don't have any other questions. I I I agree with the masks, with the businesses. Um whatever we need to do to get our community, our businesses up and running, um I I'm in all agreeance for that. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Crandall, did you have, go ahead Supervisor Crandall.
Oh, I was just gonna just wait for the public to speak.
Okay. Yeah, you know, um once again, I just want to thank you, uh Dr. Pace. I know you said Ayesha Miller. There I know there are a lot of folks that helped put this thing together. Just want to thank everybody and staff for doing that. Uh obviously, uh our community is uh our business community wants to move quickly. Uh at least here's an opportunity and a roadmap uh to move in that direction. I just, you know, a- as always, I want to hear from the public and and what their comments are. But ultimately, I really, I like the the roadmap also, because down at the bottom, it shows that um we understand completely uh what we're dealing with here. As we open up, um you know, there is a real chance that we do have uh the cases that we were expecting, and it seems like we have a good plan to attack that. I know there'll be some more uh, you know, uh delving in to make sure we do. Um that is my concern. It's been my concern from the beginning. I think we've done a great job of doing what we needed to do at the beginning. That's why we haven't seen the cases. Um you know, I I could be proven wrong later on down the road, but ultimately caution is the way to move forward with this. Haven't seen it slow down in the state of California, seen places that it opened up and uh had an uptick a little bit. And I think we may continue to see that. So being prepared is very important. Uh ultimately, um you know, we're talking about lives here. And uh doing the right thing is going to be very important. We want to make sure that we always keep that in mind. Um the other thing, question I had just on the masks and which I greatly appreciate the uh the expression that is we open up more that the businesses and individuals will need to wear the masks as they go in. My only question would be, um if we're going to be probably doing this next week or the week after, you know, what's the hesitation of just getting an order out there right now that our businesses start doing this now and be prepared for it as it's rolled out, the ones that are currently open? I think you'll hear today and probably in public comment and emails that we're always getting, that we we have constituents that are very concerned about that at this point. And um so those are some of my initial comments, but ultimately, good job. I really believe the Verily contract, which came through the governor's office. Um I'm glad that they're going to be stepping up and, you know, uh we'll keep the pressure on them to do that. And ultimately, we would love to have a testing site down in South County um in Middletown. I know it had a question mark by it. Uh but we need to have a testing site down in South Lake County. If you guys are having troubles uh and doing that, please reach out to uh, we have a large parking lot that we're in control of in the south area that has, I think, everything you guys need. Um so we'd be willing to have a conversation about that um if if you'd like, or I can make other contacts in the area. Uh but having one in South County is very important. All right, that's all I have. So any other comments from the board before we open it up to public comment? Supervisor Sabatier.
I really like what you said Supervisor Simon about the uh the mask and and it's not, I I'm not going to echo exactly what you said. But I think that if we're going to do it, then maybe we need to say we're going to do it and and put a date so that our businesses can prepare themselves in order to stock up on the masks that they need for their employees, rather than give them a very short window of opportunity to be prepared to meet the uh any new guidelines. Uh so I think that we're talking about it. It's it was something that we've discussed a little bit in the past, but never in such a uh a firm statement that was made today by Dr. Pace, that this is what we're potentially going to do. This is what we're going to do as we open up. Uh and so I think that if we can make a guesstimate of when we can get that from the state, that we can also make that guesstimate for when we're going to say that masks, when we open these things up, masks are going to be mandatory for inside businesses to give our businesses the ability to start preparing for that.
Supervisor Brown.
I guess I'll just be the odd man out real quick. Uh I don't think it's mandatory masks are the way to go. You got, again, here we are, you know, stating good intentions without any ability whatsoever to enforce it. It's going to be selective. I think the market will enforce it. If people want to shop someplace where there are masks required, masks on the employees, that's where they'll shop. If they don't want to go in there, then they shouldn't go in there. So I think the market will will dictate who uses it. I think it's actually probably a good marketing tool. But it's not going to be enforced. And if it is, it's going to be very selective as as everything else has been enforced throughout this. So I just want to go on the record as saying I oppose the mandatory feel-good, wear a mask because we're telling you you should. So.
I do appreciate your opinion, uh Supervisor Brown. Um but ultimately, you know, it is it is something we should think about protecting those workers that are in those facilities. So um ultimately, it'll be decided one way or the other, but uh thank you very much for your opinion. Um super, any other questions from supervisors at this point? If not, we'll go ahead and open this thing up and start some public comment. Okay. All right, uh usually what we do is um we try and open the room up and then go to uh any written public comment is I think that's the same format we'll kind of stick with today. Um please, we'll try and limit. I know we got a lot of people in the room. I know there's going to be a lot of discussion. Go ahead and try and limit the comments to two minutes uh so we can get everybody in there. And then I know even with the, we have some uh comment, public comment that was made emailed in, we'll read through those and we'll go from there. And I already see some room, some hands coming up. So Jake, go ahead and open up the room. And as we can go through the raised hands, uh we can go ahead and start that. So go ahead.
Sure, okay. Um uh first, I did want to bring up, I had somebody uh share a question. He doesn't have the ability to speak, and he brought this up early, so I wanted to see if we could do that first.
Okay. Yeah, we really want to try and make sure that they're coming through Zoom or they're doing written comment. Um that's, you know, really what we'd like to do. Those are the two opportunities there. The email, I think you have to get in the night before the meeting. Uh and then it'll be put into the public record. Um so I just, I want to make that clear. We're trying, you know, that's what we're trying to do. Uh go ahead, Jake.
Okay, so uh well, Joe here is in Zoom, and he uh chatted to me this question. He says, if we have a question or violation on what someone or s- or business is doing, who can we contact to report this and or ask if something is okay to do or not?
Think I would pass it to Dr. Pace or Denise?
Right, so this is um, this is great. Uh the thing to do would be to contact our email or phone number. So the email is HOAC, M H O A C at lakecountyca.gov. So M H O A C at lakecountyca.gov. And I don't have the phone number right now. Maybe Denise can look that up, or she probably knows it. But um and if you call in that number, or we have people there five days a week, usually half day on Saturday as well, answering questions, uh giving information. If there's violations, you can let us know. We, you know, we've been working out the whole enforcement piece and um so people sometimes are getting visited. Supervisor Brown's right that there, you know, enforcement is always an issue with these things. That's why we're trying to set it up with environmental health and with some of the other county sort of uh uh setups. The local law enforcement has been very helpful in in working with us as well. And but, you know, they've got other things to do. So we're just trying to piece all this together. But if you let us know, we will figure out where it goes.
Hi, this is Denise. Um so the phone number is two six three eight one seven four.
Thank you, Denise. Okay, Jake.
Okay, so the next hand I have on my list here uh looks like uh is Mark and Lucia.
Okay, Mark.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hear you.
Yeah, hi. First, I wanted to thank uh Dr. Pace and his staff again for putting together an excellent plan. It's thorough, it's wise, and uh to the point. It it encompasses the things that we need to do. And I want to also encourage him to stick to his plan to require masking. Um I think for most of us that have been out there, uh first of all, we have to go grocery shopping at some point. And uh when we go to the stores, to see both staff and customers not wearing masks is very um dis- disconcerting. As far as whether this is just a feel-good thing or not, um I think the evidence is in from around Asia and other places that um masking is the way to control this or one way to control this. And the sooner that we mask up, the better. So I agree that putting a date on it, letting businesses get prepared and um and then having the mask enforced indoors is the way to go. Um as far as market enforcement, a masking or no masking, I think businesses would be wise to consider that older folks uh like myself are not going to patronize businesses uh that don't have masks. And furthermore, protecting their staff is just, it's a moral obligation. So the staff should be masked, the customer should be masked, and it will be a way to to help contain this.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown.
Since that comment was directed mostly at my comments, I'd like to add that I agree that that's my whole point, that it would be, you know, if somebody doesn't want to shop someplace where they're not wearing masks, don't go there. And also, you don't need to go to a grocery store anymore. Apparently, there's Instacart and a lot of other options available. So that is available for people who are afraid to go to the store.
Okay, Jake, let's go to the next comment.
All right, uh it looks like I have a hand up from Denise. Is that an old raise?
No, it's it's new. I wanted to uh comment on um a few questions that Supervisor Chair Simon had.
Oh, okay.
Um so Chair Simon, the um square footage versus amount of um customer flow is part of the social distancing plan?
Yeah, I think that was Supervisor Sabatier who had that had that comment.
Sorry, Supervisor Sabatier. Um that is part of the social distancing plan that the um businesses are supposed to put together and post on their door. So that does allow um them to show that they don't have that flow, such as you said, like a furniture store um would not nearly have the amount of participants in the building that a grocery store would have. And then the second thing um was from um Chair Simon. The testing site in Middletown, uh we just are waiting for Verily to approve it. So we have one. We've done all the the background work on it. Uh we're just waiting for their hires up and we anticipate having that um by the time of this, end of this week when they get here.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that update. I saw a question mark on there. I just wanted, so thank you, Denise. Thank you, uh Dr. Pace. Uh go ahead, Jake. I see Frank has his hand up.
Okay, yes. Frank, uh it's your turn to speak next. I'm gonna unmute you here. Can you guys a sound check, Frank?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you very much. Frank Deloso here. I know I've called in a couple times before, but it's just really uh um, you know, I agree with Supervisor Brown. I think the market will do what it needs to do in order to uh keep their customers safe. Um to say that our social distancing has worked, we don't know that because we don't have a control group. So to say that is actually uh not a very uh good statement. But also, um you know, I'm just looking some stuff up. Um you know, I'm not an attorney or anything like that, but you know, from what I see, that we're no longer uh no longer in the definition of of a state of emergency according to the Emergency Services Act. Um in section eight, five, five, eight, you can look that up, and I can email it into all you, all all you guys. Uh in B and C, which says uh which are likely to be beyond the control or services of personnel or equipment. Our hospitals have been ramped up. We're not beyond the control. We don't have uh, you know, people dying everywhere um like what was anticipated. We have even come close to beyond our control. Our hospitals are empty. There's zero FEMA trailers. I understand what the initial data presented on COVID, but COVID right now is not an epidemic in California. Um and a state of emergency ru- really needs to be terminated as soon as, at the soonest possible time as the um as in that code that I just read in the Emergency Services Act. Um also, uh according to California Code eight, six, two, seven point five, the government code, it says that the temporary suspension of any statute, ordinance, regulation, or rule shall remain effective until the order or regulation is rescinded by the governor or by the governor's proclamation, the termination of the state of emergency for a period of uh or for a period of sixty days, whichever occurs first. And we're coming up on those sixty days, and to keep us in a state of emergency um when there really is not a state of emergency, I really believe is going against our rights and civil liberties um as Americans. We can, there's a, you know, there's a time to correct, but if you overcorrect, you can actually do a lot more damage uh than you can in just trying to correct slowly. And I, you may think that you're correcting slowly, but this is doing more damage to our community, to our children, to our businesses. And I'll leave it at that. Have a good day, guys.
Thank you, Frank. I know you have called in. Uh you know, uh I know we have an attorney on the phone. Uh Anita, I didn't know if you had anything to talk about the legal.
Well, I do understand that there are some people out there who believe that the state of emergency is waning or never existed or has passed. The governor of the state of California doesn't believe it. Under the public health laws, the possibility and risk of contagion can generate a public health emergency. The public health emergency is truly what is generating all of this. Um the declaration of an emergency and what can stop and start it is is certainly not at all a black and white analysis. I do understand what the speaker is saying, but it is uh much more complicated than that. And again, when you have a public health emergency, the public health officer and the State Department of Public Health have a great deal of authority to attempt to keep people safe. And it is difficult to say that these measures without a control, you know, there haven't, hasn't been a group of people who've gone out and and risked COVID to see if staying at home uh uh helps. Uh but it's really not a laboratory situation, and there have been a number of of uh studies and Of uh, studies and tests done across the globe that point to. Social distancing and sheltering in place as an effective means. Obviously, it can't remain effective forever because you can't. Stay in the house forever. Uh, I would also just say that. As you're looking at all of this, it becomes more of a risk analysis in terms of an emergency and danger. And that is part of what the governor's office, your board, and certainly. All of the county public health officers have to determine in an ever-evolving landscape. This isn't an easy analysis legally and in terms of the legal analysis of these statutes and parts of statutes. Uh, this is the first global pandemic of of such size and spread that I'm aware of, at least in my lifetime. So there's going to be a lot of review of the laws and the meanings behind the laws as everyone moves forward.
Thank you Anita. Okay, we want to continue with the room here, um. Do we have any other hands up at this point Jake?
Uh, we don't have any more hands up, but I do know of two comments out there. Uh, uh, a hand just come up. Uh, but first off, I know uh, Margaret Sanders wanted to ask a question. Uh, Margaret Sanders, I have you unmuted. Can you give me a check please? Are you there Margaret? Oh, she muted her phone back. Okay, I will move on from that one. I saw a hand come up for uh. Leroy Dubral?
Yes.
All right Leroy, we can hear you.
Okay, fine. I'm just wondering, we heard all the problems when they opened the beaches down in Southern California. About social distancing and all this. And so up here, we had the perfect time. To prevent a lot of people from uh, you know, traveling distances, the fish in the lake. What we did, we opened the whole lake up. And we had a perfect example there, how we could have, if we looked into it, I had a little more insight when we did that. That if they would have just enforced the quadramuscle stickers and. Prevented other people from other areas from coming on the lake by not issuing stickers to them. We could have prevented all the people coming down from the other areas and from the affected areas. Well, it seems that we didn't do any insight into that. We had our county employees at the ramps. That could prevent this, but they issued, uh, you know, uh, some bait shops issued over fifty licenses for people. That were out of state, uh, coming in the fish year. And of course, these people did not have to wear masks. They did not have to do social distancing. There was no enforcement at all on 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 this stuff. It just seems like the county wanted to make some money on selling them quadramuscles stickers. I don't know why the health department didn't get a hold of the people who issued the stickers. And tell them not to issue the stickers to out-of-towners. That would have solved the whole problem, very simply. That's my question.
Okay Supervisor Sabatier. Doctor Pace?
I'll go to you. Do you want to, do you want to answer that Supervisor?
And as far, as far as I'm concerned, we've discussed it many a times in this forum and it's either we sell to none. Or we can sell to all, because if we choose who we sell to, then we have the problem of discrimination. And and we cannot look at where you are from to decide wh- what can be sold to you or not. If we. If we sell to all or none, then we're treating everybody the same and it's a uh, it's it's a equitable way of doing things. If we don't do it equitably, then we have the chance of getting ourselves in some legal troubles.
Yeah, and I would just agree, you know, I mean, basically, we, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of work going in there. The best way to do this. I I agree with the caller. It would have been nice to have been able to open the lake a little bit just for the local folks and keep everybody else out. We don't really have the capacity to do that from an enforcement point of view and from uh. There's concerns about the legality of doing that. So we, rather than not selling quagga muscle stickers. We decided it was more important to make sure that um, the boats that did go in, if people just went in without the stickers. And that nobody was monitoring for invasive species, it could really set the lake back in terms of the invasive species. So. This was actually, despite what the caller thinks, there was a lot of thought put into this. It was the best decision we felt like we could come up with at the time and. It may, you know, it may not agree with it, but it's uh, it it wasn't done just by not paying attention, so.
Supervisor Crandall, do you have a question?
No, it's more of a comment because uh, because there was another question that was posed to me about that as well. Um, I remember we discussed some of this in the, in the recovery meeting. Um, and. I don't remember it well, and and it's been said that we gave, the board supervisors gave the directive to um. Sell stickers to out-of-towners and whatnot, but I never remember giving any type of directive. Um, and I, you know, it must, this is the thing that I'm thinking about because I'm thinking about that meeting. I'm looking through my notes. And I was under the impression that we were only conducting the stickers that were in county. Um, but you know, that one must have went by me. Um, I don't know if that's what was discussed in that meeting. I know I remember the meeting and talking about some of this, but um. If that, if that went, I thought that we were going to discuss it another day or someone was going to come up with that. Um, so. If that's the case, I dropped the ball on it because I told folks that I don't remember that. Just wanted to state that, um, but. Um, that that was my impression and so I had the wrong impression if that's the case.
So I can clarify that. That was um, uh, that was my decision and in with. Discussions with the folks that manage the quagga muscle and the the lake. Uh, you know, the folks that are working with all that, we, so that was not a board decision. So, you know, I I don't think you're responsible for that from my point of view anyhow. It was uh. We were talking about how to do this, how to open the safe, how to open the lake as safely as possible. How to do it, the with the different timeframes, and this was the best decision we were able to come up with and. You know, I I'll take full responsibility for it because it's uh, and the quagga muscle stickers. Again, part of the reason to sell it. If basically what we tried to do was give very strong messaging that people should stay home. That's what the governor's order is. The shelter in place order continues. Non-essential travel is not permitted. But if people choose to come up here with their boat, those poor guys, the ramp monitors. You know, we didn't want them, you know, there's violence going on around the country and stuff like that. We didn't want to put those guys in that that position. And we didn't want the people just to put their boat in the lake without getting properly inspected. So we felt like if they came up here. That we put some signs up at the ramps that said, you know, this is in violation of the governor's orders for you to be traveling out of county. We, we open the lake for local residents, but if they were going to go ahead and come in anyhow. We weren't ready to put up a battle there and we did not want them sneaking in without. Getting the inspections because then we have problems with the invasive muscle. So that was, that was the way that the decision came about.
Yeah, Supervisor Scott, I'll go right to you, but I I just want to, you know, that. EJ, um Supervisor Crandall, that's the way I remember the conversation in the reopening meeting too, that. It was going to be to locals only and then obviously Dr. Pace, you guys had a conversation and changed it. So. EJ, you did remember correctly because that's how I remembered that meeting going also. Um, Supervisor Scott?
You know, I would just like to echo that. I received a bunch of calls this weekend too. People concerned that there were people on the lake that were from out of town. And you know, the messaging was very, very clear that only local residents were allowed on the lake. So I I think. For me, um, as government, I think people really struggle with trusting, trusting us. So I think we have to be very clear with our messaging and making sure that. We are not putting one message out, um, but doing something else. I think mostly. Where we sit right now, the, our community, our public needs to trust what our messaging is. So I think that is incredibly important that we are doing that.
And I know that um. Our department head, uh, Scott DeLeon, I I know uh, Scott may be on. I don't know if Scott wants to make any comments.
Well, uh, dot, no- nothing in addition to what Dr. Pace has told you all. We, we don't have. The ability to to limit sales to residents only. It's a public lake. Uh, we put notices at all of the screening locations that. Uh, people who came here from out of the area were violating the governor's orders, but but we don't have the ability to. To say you can get a sticker and you, you don't. That's uh, uh, legally, we don't, we can't do that. Um, I, let's put some things in perspective. Um, uh. Our ramp monitor contacts, uh, these guys uh, write down uh, where people are from. Uh, we had o- over the weekend between Saturday and Sunday, uh, the the ramp monitors. Uh, made contact with two hundred and fifty-two resident boaters during those two days and thirty-six non-residents. So, um, the numbers of non-resident folks. Uh, were relatively low. Uh, they were certainly lower than what what I had anticipated. Uh, with our lake being the only one open uh, uh, in the area. Uh, but um. Uh, you know, the, the, we, we just didn't have the ability to to limit it to residents only.
Okay. Thank you Scott. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you. Uh, I I had a question for uh, Director DeLeon and before that, I I do want to say that I echo the sentiments of Supervisor Scott. And I know it's a a tough situation where we're trying to limit the potential actions of the public. Um, but at the same time, as we're hearing from our our public members that are uh, in our Zoom meeting today. Uh, there's, there's, there's two sides where one wants to be more cautious, one wants to be less cautious and move forward to get back to our normal. And and there is a, if we go one side, then we, then then we have the potential to lose trust on the other side saying you don't care about the health. We move on the other side. They say you don't care about the economy or the the struggle of uh, personal finances. Um, and I think that that, even though it's difficult and maybe worrisome to to. Um. Make the statement that the lake is open versus it's open for residents. I think when we accidentally get caught. In 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 a mixed message, it uh, makes both of those sides question some of the future actions that we might take and. Uh, I support what you were trying to do. We were trying to be cautious and limit the the uh, incoming traffic. Um, but I think that there might be so- some uh, effects uh, because of that. And so I, it's 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 a tough one. But I think that honesty is always going to get us to the best place, uh, so we don't have to explain ourselves uh, afterwards. Uh, but Director DeLeon. I wanted to ask you, um. Oh, I forgot my comment for Doc, uh, Director DeLeon. Um. Yes, uh, the other lakes, uh, Bit Lake, Barriessa, Lake Sonoma, Mendocino. Do you know their timeline for opening up? I know it was supposed to be around maybe the eighteenth or something like that, but I'm not sure if that was firm.
I I don't have any specific dates, um, there. Uh, it's our understanding that Barriessa was open to non-motorized vessels. Or vessels that were already moored on the lake can be used, uh, but the ramps were closed. Uh, and, um, uh, but I don't have any dates uh, on when they're going to be reopening. And we're, staff is working with representatives from all of those water bodies, Lake Mendocino, Lake Sonoma, uh, Lake Barriessa. And um, uh, we just, we don't have any information on when uh, their dates are going to be.
Okay. And then my my final question, do you know if you plan on having uh, ramp monitors this upcoming weekend as well? Just to kind of check in to see if maybe word got out, uh, and more people want to come through just to see if we might be able to get some more statistics for the following week?
Absolutely. Our program is now in place. Uh, we expect them to be there for the remainder uh, of the summer. Uh, the boating season, uh, barring any, you know, any future closure of the lake, um. Uh, the lakes open, our ramp monitors will be there. Uh, just incidentally, we also. Uh, had two uh, quagga muscle uh, inspection dogs. Uh, at various ramps around the the county. Um, uh, went down on Saturday and Sunday and saw them. Uh, uh, in operation, uh, there at the ramp in Lakeport. And uh, we'll have them through uh, Memorial Weekend.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, um, just wanted to mention too that we did, we did discuss, um. You know, the the difficulty in um, you know, enforcement when it came to the stickers. I remember going back and forth about it, but I never remember from the inclusion. The other thing though, I wanted to highlight though, was the decision to actually put out a notice before the notice um, of opening. So there was like a pre-notice talking about the idea of opening possibly this weekend. And that was done so that the public would know and they weren't just surprised with it on Friday. So I wanted to also mention that that this group did consider. Keeping that, uh, the public in mind with that rather than just kind of, you know, uh, keeping a lot of that information to breast. So. Just wanted to emphasize that.
Thank you Supervisor Crandall. Okay Jake, do we have any more questions? Uh, are any more hands up in the room?
I'll be still do have that comment from uh, Margaret Sanders. Uh, Margaret, if you're on the line, I have you unmuted right now. Margaret, are you there? Can you hear me?
Okay, we're gonna have to go to.
Okay. Um, I additionally have another comment that was shared uh, from a Zoom participant via text. I didn't know if we wanted to.
No, uh, you know, I think, you know, we're going to try and stick to uh, the emails, uh, those things. Can we do the hands in the room? I see two more hands came up.
So uh, the first, the hand I saw come up first was from Paula and John, um, Suleki?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I hear you there.
Yes, this is uh, John Suleki from Hidden Valley Lake. My wife Paula is here with me. Our question is one specific to Lake County. Uh, like other counties, uh, one of our largest industries is the healthcare industry. And that of course has been open because it's uh, essential. Uh, one of our second largest industries is the sum total of all governmental agencies, both uh, county, cities. Uh, state, federal, and much of that has also been open because again, it's essential. Uh, construction has been opened up so that people can work in construction jobs. And that's a large segment of our county, even though many of those are leaving the county to work in areas such as the Tubbs Fire and what have you. But the specific question unique to Lake County is our gaming industry. Unlike most counties, a measurable portion of our citizens are employed by the gaming industry. Does that put some additional emphasis on trying to get those open so that that segment can again get re-employed and back into the economy?
Um, well, I can answer that a little bit. Uh, you know, my understanding is. That gaming and those sorts of activities are in stage three or stage four. But there's also because they're um, tribal industries, there's a questions of jurisdiction. So. Uh, you know, they are working with, my understanding is that the casinos are. In conversation with the um, state entities that they work with around this and making plans. And all that, but it's kind of a a little different uh, pathway than the the other county. Uh, businesses that you're talking about.
I think I can speak a little on this, um. Our our tribal nations have had calls with Dr. Gary Pace. We've had calls with the state government. We are also federally reg- uh, regulated. Uh, so there are a lot of conversations happening there and ultimately, uh, which I'm proud of, uh, to hear and I think. Uh, Supervisor Crandall will echo the same thing. Uh, the tribes have always erred on the side of caution. And um, that's the path I think that everyone is moving on here locally. I can't speak for all seven tribes, but I know. Uh, that is how our facilities are working through this. Um, cautious. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, uh, yes, I have to, I'll agree with the Supervisor Simon. Um, I know in the, in the initial stages, um, that was made concern, um, in meeting with the tribes. Um, there was discussion about reopening at one time, I would say in late March. And there was a lot of tribes that did feel as if they were as safe as an airport, airport, or as safe as other, other situations. Um, other businesses with that same type of uh, of traffic. However, um, when, when it, when it, when it got further into it. They were more concerned about their elders, their communities, bringing the um, keeping the virus from the communities. And I know that the, uh, I know that Robinson feels uh, strongly about that as well. And so, um, they're working on different measures, I know for sure, to get their establishments moving again. Um, but in a safe manner. And so, um, I know that, um, what what supervisor Simon had said is is really accurate. Is is the tribe of Robinson feels as well and and most others that I've dealt with.
Okay, thank you very much.
Jake?
Yes, so it looks like, um, okay, we have a hand up from, uh, uh, Leroy again, but we also have a fresh hand up from Johnny here.
Let's go to, let's go to Johnny at this point.
Okay, uh, Johnny, I'm gonna unmute your mic here. Or opt to, it looks like you have it muted. All right, can you hear us Johnny?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I just want to say that I agree with Supervisor Brown on not enforcing the masks. Uh, especially when going to like a restaurant, it's kind of ridiculous that if you're going to wear a mask, you're gonna have to pull it down to eat or drink. I mean, what's that? You might slow the spread of the virus a little bit, but it's not gonna do much. Also, if you're gonna enforce the mask or the like Safeway, Walmart and all the small businesses, are they going to not enforce the max capacity rule where you have to stand outside for half an hour before entering? Um, and then, um, Bruno mentioned something about the discrimination, um, about enforcing certain things. Wouldn't it be discriminatory if you enforce the rule of wearing masks and you can't enter the public building? I mean, that, that, that's a very thin line right there too. I see it that way. Um, the people that I've talked to around the county, they also, they don't believe in the mask, but they can't join Zoom meetings all the time. Not a lot of people have the access to do that. Um, and then another thing I've noticed since you guys are basing your decision off of what Newsom is saying lately. I'm pretty sure maybe a week ago, two weeks ago, when he started opening things up, he was, he said that using the skate park was okay, but I haven't seen the skate park reopen or even some of the smaller parks around the county. So I'm just curious to see like, if that's gonna happen soon or we're just gonna not do that. I mean, like I said, you guys are basing off your decisions off what Newsom is saying. Um, but again, I don't enforce, I don't think the mask should be a good thing to enforce because like I said, there's a very thin line for discrimi- discrimination right there. And if that's what you guys are worried about, why are you guys going to enforce masks to enter the-
Two minutes, Mr. Chair.
I'm done.
John, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, I know that we have, um, yes, Supervisor Subotia?
I, I just wanted to, uh, provide a response for the parks. As far as I'm concerned, the parks are open. You just have to practice social distancing. Uh, so for instance, in one of the orders, it was that you could play basketball, but you can't play a basketball game. Like you can shoot the hoop, you could shoot at the hoop and, and just practice, but you can't have a five-on-five because at that point you can't social distance properly and have a basketball game. Uh, so I would assume that it's the same for the skate park and I think that it's different for the city of Clear Lake, uh, than it is for, uh, the one in Kelseyville, but I'm not a hundred percent sure because I have not asked specifically about the, uh, Kelseyville skate park if that one is open as well. Um, so just wanted to comment on that.
All right.
So, and-
Go ahead, Doc.
Can I just, I'm sorry, just to respond to the skate park question, um, that's the first I've heard about it, so we'll look into it and figure out what the right thing to do is. Uh, it's, and if, this is the kind of thing if people have questions about, I encourage them to send in an email to the email or to call in to the number that, um, Denise gave earlier. So it's on the, it's on the Lake County Health Department website, but we have people that these are the questions they answer. If they, if there's not a good answer and we need to change it, then, uh, that's a good place to put the, give us the feedback.
Uh, Dr. Pace, can I ask you a clarification question too, too, about, um, the masks are not a replacement to the social distancing requirement, right? I, I just, can you clarify that or?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, the masks are, um, so the masks are considered cloth facial coverings is the way we call them. So it's not an N95 mask. The main reason to wear them is it prevents the spread to other people. So if you are somebody who has the virus and you don't have symptoms yet, or you're one of the asymptomatic people, then you spread it through air droplets and coughing or just breathing, you can spread it. And to wear the mask decreases the transmission. So it seems pretty clear, I mean, you know, there's been some discussion about the evidence, the evidence is getting, we're getting more and more evidence that it's probably a good idea to wear these. It slows the transmission through the population. It doesn't protect, so Johnny, if he wears a mask, it doesn't protect him. It's protecting the other people he comes in contact with. So it's, it's kind of like a courtesy thing, uh, uh, you know, taking care of your neighbor sort of question. And that's why we get into the, to the, um, enforcement questions because, okay, you can choose not to do it for yourself, but it's really for the health of the other people around you. And in the situation of a pandemic, we can, um, uh, require certain safety things. What we can't do is discriminate based on zip code and things like that. So that's sort of the thought process around it. But, um, to, just to answer your question specifically, it would be the mask and the social distancing will continue. These are the things that keep people, that slow down the transmission is, is maintaining the social distancing, hand washing and disinfection and the cloth facial coverings.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Okay, we're gonna go to the written comments. I know we had some. I know we're working on, uh, getting these things where they're put into the record, but still today, we're gonna go ahead and read some of the public comments, uh, that have come in for today's meeting. So Carol, Jake, we're gonna go ahead and go to Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as you know, uh, it was our intention to have these attached to the Granicus Agenda Packet before the meeting. Uh, unfortunately, that didn't happen. And now that the meeting is live, we can't add it. So I'm gonna read them for now. And as soon as we close out the meeting, they'll be uploaded. And so the first one, um, comes to you from Jason Scalise of the United States Tennis Association of Northern California. And, uh, what he is asking, uh, is that you please consider allowing tennis play with that public and private facilities as soon as possible with the expectation that proper social distancing, yeah, will be in place. And he goes on to make the point that, you know, since it's an outdoor sport, um, it should be able to be managed during, uh, the shelter in place order and describes the many precautions that, um, the US Tennis Association is, is committed to. So that is, um, the crux of his public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Pace wants to add to that, but I, um, I have a couple of more.
I can just say quickly that, uh, you know, we'll look into that. That's a, yeah, I'm not sure about that and we'll look into it and see what we need to do about that.
Okay, and so the next, um, comes to you from Joy Luis of Kelseyville. And he says, please listen to Dr. Pace. His leadership has stopped COVID deaths and kept, kept us to very few cases. We have seen what has happened in rural communities and small towns all over the country that did not implement restrictions as strict as ours and, or dropped SIP orders too early. We should follow the governor's recommended reopening lead with only slight differences that are appropriate for our community. Human lives are more valuable than the economic hardship and inconvenience. Next comes from Gloria Calome. And she says, hello, I'm, uh, very concerned about the fact that more and more people in Lakeport are not wearing masks in grocery stores, retail stores, et cetera. If masking is mandatory, what can be done to protect the general population? And then she names a store, a couple of stores that, that she feels are especially, um, bad for that. And so perhaps Dr. Pace would want to comment on how the, how it would be managed with the stores since this lady is mentioning a couple of stores in-
Well, what we have been trying to do is have somebody go visit the store and let them know that we're getting some complaints. And, uh, it seems like sometimes that helps for a few days and then it doesn't, you know? And I think the next step is gonna be what, what we were talking about earlier, that we're gonna try to get some, um, sort of administrative enforcement capacity to be able to do some things. And then if, if it's a continued problem that there's some kind of fine or, uh, restrictions placed or something like that. Because it is, this is the way we're gonna be able to manage the, the, the outbreak here. And if we're gonna need to, if people aren't taking it seriously or they don't really think it applies to them, we're gonna have to figure out a way to do that. So that's, that's probably gonna be part of the package next week that we talk about.
So then-
And I think the one other, sorry, I think the one other thing to sort of say with this is I think the vulnerable populations continue to need to take special caution. This is a, you know, what we're trying to do is loosen things up for society as a whole. But, uh, what we've done is we've clamped down on everything, uh, a lot of it's to help protect the vulnerable folks. And as we loosen up, I think the vulnerable populations need to continue really being extremely careful and staying home or if you go shopping, go early in the morning and, uh, be particularly careful because the, the virus is out there and it seems to attack some people much harder than others. So thanks.
So, Mr. Chair, I believe I have four more on the topic of masking. And so I'll, I'll, um, take out the key elements of those and then again assure you that they'll be, um, added in entirety to the Granicus record. So, uh, you can go in and view them in their entirety. This next one comes from Cisa Nelson Harris, uh, who states that she understands the, the need to reopen Lake County, but also wants to point out that in our county, almost half of our population are seniors, excuse me, almost a fourth of our population are seniors and many, uh, vulnerable people as well. And, um, for this reason, she is asking you to be smart and make masking, uh, mandatory in all retail establishments. Um, and then she goes on to talk about how several stores are not, um, enforcing, um. Uh, she comments that Mendocino County has done, done this and customers are respecting it. So why, and she says, why would I spend my money in Lake County stores if forty-five minutes away, there is a safer option? Next comes from Michael Green, um, also in support of protective face coverings and provides you a link to Fresno County's order. Um, uh, uh, let's see, um, I want to make sure I don't miss any key point. Um, either face masking is elevated from a recommendation to establish, to an established policy or it is cast aside as being ineffective and unenforceable. There's no practical middle ground claimed here. So either go all in by requiring masks or be honest and tell the at-risk public that they are on their own. Next, um, again on masking comes from Arnod Hubert. And, um, uh, let's see, um, again, pointing out the vulnerable populations who are at risk. Um, and that the fact that people still need to go out and stock up on groceries. Um, and, you know, certainly are at further risk when they do that. Uh, and economic recovery will not happen without consumer and worker confidence. People will not stop shopping stores where they feel social distancing and face coverings are not taken seriously. And so he's, uh, encouraging you to follow the recommendations of the experts when it comes to facial covering. Um, next from Kathy Toy of Lakeport. Uh, Kathy, uh, also, um, supports masking and, um, as businesses open, believes the burden of requiring face coverings in all businesses and while conducting businesses curbside um, should be on, uh, the board and public health officer. It should not be left to the business owner to set this rule. Science has made it very clear that everyone should wear masks protecting one another. Please consider both the health and economic ramifications of your, of denying your citizens the protections they deserve. Moving on to a different topic, the next one comes to you from Mike Raffinelli of Lower Lake. And he says, America was founded upon the principle that all people are endowed with certain inherent and inalienable rights. The people of the county have acted responsibly, have acted in love and regard for our people and our declining infection rate reflects that. Now it's time to let the people of Lake County do what they do best, and that is get back to work. Um, limit upon our assembly exercise of freedom of religion, our right to assemble for redress of our grievances are all being infringed. Our right to ownership, control and enjoyment of our property is not only being violated without due process and just compensation. In many cases, these rights may be forever lost. The people of Lake County are responsible and honorable people. We do not want handouts. It's time to start lifting the restrictions on, upon our businesses so the people of Lake County can get back to healthy and productive lives. It's time to honor our most sacred principles of government. And it is the duty of the county to secure the rights of the people, not to infringe upon them. And the last one comes to you from Sarah Ryan, uh, Deputy Tribal Administrator of the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, who says that now that Lake County has aligned with Lake County, excuse me, with the governor's order for business operations and shelter in place, there's some confusion about which stores are open and how they're supposed to be conducting themselves in order to be operating in compliance. And so there are questions from Sarah. Will we be requiring businesses to post the safety checklists? Will we proactively send out staff to check on them? Uh, what happens if a business refuses to comply? Uh, will you be reporting on compliance measures in the future? And that completes the public comment for this item that was sent in by email.
Thank you, Carol. Yeah, I don't want to start, speak for Dr. Pace or anything. I know we've talked about the masking issue that's coming down the pipe. Uh, enforcement and other things I think are gonna be presented next week with the proposal. Um, I think there were some of those questions, uh, that we've already, uh, kind of addressed or gone over that may be addressed in the future. Uh, Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I, the question earlier from Margaret who, uh, they weren't able to get her, um, question in. She had typed to me what her questions are and comments. Should I go ahead with that or let Dr. Pace answer Carol first?
Um, you know, we're really trying to stick to if they can send it in the day, night before or, or get on the Zoom and, and figure that out. I know, you, you know, we want to kind of keep to those two, uh, things. I just want to reiterate that to the board that that's the path we're trying to take, um, uh, you know, in the future. So, uh, I don't know. Did you have an answer to, uh, I don't know if Dr. Pace was going to address anything with Carol? Uh, the comments.
I mean, I think, uh, with, with Sarah's questions, they were all good questions. I think I sort of mentioned it. We're basically working on all that right now. The businesses that are allowed to open are the very specific ones that are listed in the l- low-risk retail that can do curbside pickup. So they can go on the website or go on the state website and look that up. We are planning on, and they should be putting up the, posting up their ways that they're gonna keep people safe by doing that. As we move into the accelerated opening, uh, that's gonna be required. And then we're gonna try to work on the administrative enforcement mechanisms for all that. So it's a, it's a unfolding process. I, I'm sure there's confusion. You know, it's changing really fast. Every day there's new guidelines coming down from the state. We're just trying to figure out how to work with it. So if people have specific questions, the best way to do is to go in through the, through the email and the phone, uh, line that we have at the Health Department.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pace. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and so I'll just, she was on and she was trying to get her, uh, question in and that's why I'm just gonna go ahead and move forward with it. It's, it's just, it's actually comments and one simple question. Um, she feels that her constitute, our constitutional rights are at risk. She feels we're very good at being compliant with the governor's mandate as it is. And she believes, as Supervisor Brown does, by allowing the citizens to make their own decisions, the reality of the pandemic, pandemic is questionable. And her question to Dr. Pace is, if we want to prepare, why aren't we keeping the drug hydroxychloroquine being used and on hand? The drug has shown a hundred percent effective against COVID. So that's her question for Dr. Pace.
Oh, gosh.
Um, well, the recommendations in the medical community are different. The, the hydroxychloroquine is used for other things, rheumatoid arthritis and some other things. It's been, got a long track record for that. Um, for the COVID, it's actually the, the current thinking in the medical world is that the side effect profile is worse than the benefit that you get from it. They are doing some studies. So at this point, that's not really the, um, the- So at this point, that's not really the um, the preferred treatment. There is remdinevir, which is, they are seeing some positive effects from that, very expensive. They're distributing it through the state right now. Uh, we don't have any in Lake County beca, that I'm aware of because of uh, we don't have any cases of severe cases. It's going to the places where there are um, a lot of problems. So uh, in terms of treatment, which is what the question is, I think uh, there is a treatment that seems to be helpful. They're doing a lot of research on this right now. We do have access through the state to get this if it's needed. Uh, but there's not as much as we need, as, as the number of patients are, but they're working on it. And the hydroxychloroquine is really um, uh, not the recommended treatment from the medical professional point of view.
Okay, I think that um, is all the public comment at this point. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board uh, for any final discussion items or uh, we can wrap this thing up here um, in just a few minutes. So, alright?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Anita.
I, I'm sorry, I just, I, I don't know how to do that. I'm sorry. Um, the um, the issue that I wanted to bring up just really quickly was the issue with regard to the lake and you know, the, the Clear Lake has a, has a very definite legal status. It's a navigable water of the United States. And that puts it into a, a different position than other bodies of water that don't have that designation, which gives you a right to public access. Uh, and as your board has known throughout the pandemic, uh, Dr. Pace and even your board with regard to uh, the rules that you put into play, everything is based upon the activity that creates the risk, not the, not the particular user that might create the risk. And you could see where looking at just users could be quite a slippery slope. And because travel back and forth goes both ways, that could also be a very slippery slope. So I just wanted to remind your board what you've already discussed in terms of activity versus user throughout these several weeks. And again, the fact that Clear Lake is a navigable water of the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Okay, Supervisor Bautier?
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Pace, I, I know you were saying that uh, place of business will have to post uh, for the public to see what their safety guidelines or whatever their, their uh, COVID nineteen guidelines are as they reopen. Are those going to be submitted to public health as well? I know you said there's not an approval process, but will those be submitted to public health as well?
I think we were thinking about just having them submit, uh, posted on their doors so that it's really up to the uh, the business. So we're basically letting the business do self-attestation. So basically they're attesting that they're following these rules and they're looking through their, they're going through, there's a checklist and they're going through the checklist or writing in their plan about this. And then the public can see it and, and if they're not following through with what they say they're going to do, then we will uh, presumably get some complaints and then we'll send some of the folks out to talk to them and and then there will be more perusal of the plan and kind of making sure everything's okay. Um, that was sort of the way we were thinking about doing it is partly just because of simple staffing issues. You know, we're, we're at about half of our staff that we need to have right now anyhow. And we're doing all the medical stuff and the testing sites and you know, everything else. And so this part of it is we, but it's also part of, I think the philosophy of the county is sort of um, independence and self-management and taking care of business. So we're kind of putting it, we're, we're letting the businesses have the first crack at doing the right thing. And then if there's a problem, then we would come in and, and deal with the complaints.
And, and so to, to follow up on that, and I don't, I don't think that you should be involved in uh, every place of business is slightly different and they would know the best way on how to move forward. Uh, and, and then once, if you get complaints, then at that point to intervene and say, okay, well, let's try this or let's talk about this. But the reason I was saying that, and I get it that it takes staff time, but if it's possible, for instance, if I wanna go look up a restaurant to see what their score was from the last environmental health inspection, I can. And so to me, if it was made public, what the safety guidelines are for stores rather than me having to go to a store, find out what their guidelines are, only to find out that that's not gonna work for me. Uh, and also if it's public, then as a store, if I'm nervous about what guidelines I wanna create, oh, I can read up on one and copy and paste right off of a website. So I think um, some people are very nervous and I wanna help those people who are very nervous. Some people not so much. So they don't mind going to the store and seeing what the guidelines are and dealing with whatever. Uh, but I was just wondering if that was a possibility, not forcing that on you, cause I know it would take staff time. But if it's possible, I think it would be helpful for the community to look it up online, see what the safety guidelines are, and also being able to copy and paste for their own place of business as well.
Good idea. Well, we'll talk about it and figure it out. Yep.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to follow on that too. You know, there is a lot of folks calling in about um, uh, where to go, where to find the forms, how to fill it out, what needs to be done, and just trying to point them in the right direction so they have it. So that will be something we can work out there and just make sure we're, we're pointing everybody in the right direction. Cause those, those forms that are up on the website are very informative, they're pretty simple. And I see Denise uh, has her hand up. Go ahead Denise.
Hi, so thank you. Yes, our forms are available on the public health website underneath the business tab. And then underneath the Spanish tab too, if a business needs that. Um, in addition to that, they can go to the state site, the CBPH site, or the state site, which we have links uh, on our website as well. And it lists out every like business category. So they're looking on what they should be doing as a food facility or as construction or a golf course. The guidance is on that site um, that tells them for their business type, what they should be doing. So I'm ha, I'm happy to look into, you know, posting plans on a website so uh, other people can, can see what the plan is. It, it will take me a little bit to get that worked out. And also public messaging, cause originally we said submit your plans to public health or review. Um, and now we, the last press release said you don't need to submit your plans, just you need to help these documents and post them. So um, there'll probably be some confusion to the public out there. We switched it again.
Okay. Yeah, just trying to be clear and clarifying it. Uh, I, I do know the folks uh, who have contacted me have gone on there and found the forms. They're greatly appreciative of it. And yeah, we just wanna make sure we have the right message out there to them as they're, we're doing. But also uh, letting them know uh, in the conversations uh, that there is going to be a phasing that's happening in this. And they need to pay attention to our meetings today and any other public releases that are coming out. Okay, uh, any more questions or comments for Denise or Dr. Pace? Supervisor Bautier, go ahead.
And, and I hate to uh, I'm, I'm, I'm cracking a whip without wanting to necessarily crack the whip, but I'm hopeful that on Tuesday, we can really get to that final uh, uh, fin, final approval so we can submit that as soon as possible to the state. And, and um, let us know how we can help.
I think Denise, did you put your hand back up again?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
Our, our goal is to have this plan um, ready before Tuesday's meeting next week. My goal is actually to have it ready by either Saturday or the latest Monday.
Excellent, thank you. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I just wanted to um, add to that. I, I think that, you know, with all of this being done, that um, that, that's a, that's a great plan to move forward. We've been, we've been vying for uh, local control for at least the last month. Um, we're getting in that direction. The Blue Poller Committee has put out a lot of information to the um, to the uh, Health Department and they've worked together. Uh, Dr. Pace came into the last meeting, had a lot of good discussion with them about some things and, and I think it's helping. Um, we'll know more of course in two weeks as to what's gonna happen with the lake. And you know, I think with knowing what happens from there, I think we'll be able to, to, to get a little more insight as to uh, you know, how far we can go with, with businesses, which I think we can, we can get pretty far. Like I, you know, I'm noticing different uh, organizations and, and businesses that are already open. Um, you know, for example, Verizon, you know, I, I took my mom to get her phone and and, and there's some store, central, you know, business and whatnot, but you know, I, I see it as, as, as similar to other small businesses that can do the same. And so I'm, I'm, I, I see we're on that path. I know we're on that path. And I appreciate you working with uh, with us, Dr. Pace and Denise.
Okay, Dr. Pace, you have any final comments before you uh, leave the meeting today?
Well, um, thank you for all the discussion today. I mean, I think we're moving, we are now in a different chapter than we were before. And this is good. And we're moving forward. We're, you know, it's nice to be in discussions with everybody about um, we, we talked with some of the folks with camps and thinking about how, how to help the kids over the summer, you know, talking to the businesses. It's uh, all these things are very optimistic and we are walking a fine line between keeping everybody safe in the process. And everybody needs to be aware that if you wanna keep moving this way, social distancing, the masking, uh, being really careful with the vulnerable people is what's gonna allow us to keep moving forward. So um, I just, you know, there's caution and optimism at the same time. And um, and so I think that's really, really important. And uh, we've appreciated all the collaboration with the business community and everybody else. And so it's uh, hopefully we can keep um, keep on track and uh, uh, keep safe. So thanks.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much, Dr. Pace. Thank you Denise. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and move on to um, our eleven AM item. Uh, it is now eleven oh two. And so we'll go ahead and go to uh, item four point three. Uh, consideration of amendment to the agreement between the County of Lake and the Skylight Shores Resort for COVID nineteen emergency isolation housing and authorize the chair to sign. So go ahead and move to the next item.
Denise Farmroy, are you presenting this item?
Yes, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I'm here.
Go ahead Denise.
Thank you, thank you supervisors. As um, Chair Simon, as part of our uh, response to the COVID nineteen and and the conditions, we had put in place a uh, an agreement with a local hotel who was willing to work with us to house um, people as a community who could not self-isolate. And the three conditions were either uh, they were exposed to somebody who might be um, uh, might have COVID nineteen and they need to self, safely self-isolate until the test um, can come back and and the other one was they are test positive for COVID nineteen and they cannot safely self-isolate at home um, and/or quarantine. So those were the, the things we um, were expecting. Of course, a much wider uh, band of um, cases than, than a higher curve than what we saw. Uh, and so we, we've relooked at the um, contract and we're requesting your board um, as we revise the contract to have rooms in a more tiered approach. So instead of having sixteen rooms all the time, we'll have uh, five or six. And then if those fill up, then we'll get five or six more. And if those fill up, we'll get five or six more up to the hotel's capacity. Um, as you saw in our presentation, having rooms available uh, to, for, to isolate people um, is one of the criterias. But I had um, issues financially with having so many rooms when the, the spread didn't happen to the degree we predicted it would, to continue um, having that big of a block of rooms. We also have some funding that I believe is on your agenda today, it might be next week. Um, that will support this for the rest of the year. As we come back into fall, we may see the need for this again. So, thank you.
Thank you Denise. Supervisor Brown?
So I just wanna get this straight here, cause uh, I, I, I understand the intent of it originally. It was, you know, line this up, but I, I was always a little bit concerned since all the motels are shut down. It wasn't like we had to hurry up and, and line one up the, in the event that we wouldn't uh, have it available, cause they're all available. But with a, with a contract of this size, I'm not clear on why we didn't uh, put out an RFP real quick to some of the other hotels and give them an opportunity, including um, some of the um, the motels at some of the casinos. I, I, I don't understand why, why we would uh, just commit to one hotel and they would automatically get it without the bidding process or at least some minimal effort in a bidding process. So uh, it seems like a lot of money that, that could, could either be less because of the bidding process or um, or we could spread it around a little bit depending upon the, the um, the location around the lake.
So um, good, good question and good comment Supervisor Brown. Um, I appreciate those. We contacted every single hotel in this county multiple times over the course of a week or two. The Karen Shelter team led by uh, Director Mark Etan and her team did that. Uh, if you remember back in the early stages, we were trying to get the uh, the uh, trailers here and we were trying to work with one of the um, casinos who had uh, RV parking. And they declined that as well as declining their hotel. So while we did not put out an official RFP, we did contact every hotel in this county. No one was willing to work with us for this particular program, except for this hotel.
Okay, so I was involved in that and there are two different time, timeframes where this happened. The first one, no one wanted to be involved with it because it was largely the population that would uh, most likely be homeless. Um, and that, that may have been part of it. And it was used for quarantine um, and, and uh, overflow for uh, hospital. So that was originally when we were gonna get the trailers and we were, you know, trying to get the uh, the campground. So I'm familiar with that. Um, the Skylark didn't come on till later as uh, an option when we started looking at opportunities for people like law enforcement, nurses and, and folks like that. Then they, then they, that's when they said that they were interested. So um, I, I, I think you're comparing two separate events and two separate proposals that were sprung out there. Um, so uh, and I, and I, I know I'm not wrong with that because I was actively, actively involved with that. So um, I think given, given the circumstances now, you know, six weeks later from when those events happened or even longer, uh, I still think that eighty thousand dollars or whatever this uh, eighty-one thousand dollars over the term of it could be um, could be either lessened by the bid process or spread it around to some of the others. And maybe I'm speaking for I think since we don't have any and it doesn't look like we're going to have any, anytime in the near future. Um, I think we have time if we wanna go, reach out to them again. And then if they don't want to, they don't want to. But I still think that, that uh, it's not a bad idea to um, to look, look and see if there's an auction available.
So um, Supervisor Brown, I I, I am assured by the, the team that did this. They did reach out to all the hotels again and um, for the second round. And still nobody was interested except for this hotel. We did just place somebody in the middle of the night uh, on Friday. I did that myself. Um, so to, for the benefit of the community to have a program put up into place. Um, it, it is for ease of the community and the people that we have to get in there in the middle of the night. Um, with, you know, in, in a short timeline. So.
Okay, so I, I stand corrected and I'm sorry I brought it up and you know, it's nice that we have one room available at the cost of eighty-one thousand dollars. So I just, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you Denise. Supervisor Bautier?
Um, so I, I do have um, I share the same concern about the eighty thousand and, and I, I am not going to argue about the timeline or the efforts made by public health. Uh, I think that we're in a different environment now where I think people overall, especially uh, hoteliers uh, financially, they're struggling. They might say yes today versus saying no before. Uh, it, it might be different circumstances where also we're, we're seeing that, for instance, Project Room Key um, that, 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 that has not created any uh, uh, issues that other hoteliers would say, we don't wanna do this. Uh, so maybe the uh, environment has changed. I think that for the purposes of the plan that we just spoke of earlier with Dr. Pace and the COVID nineteen update, I wanna make sure that we have at least something set in place so that when we submit the plan, we have proof that we have the rooms available that we would need. so that when we submit the plan, we have proof that we have the rooms available that we would need. But at the same time, I also think that putting out an RFP and with the new environment that our hoteliers are in would be able to say, okay, you know, now let's look at it with fresh eyes and see if this is something I want to be a part of. So I just want to make that statement that I, I also support going through an RFP, but I think that we need to at least do this till the end of the month. And then the RFP as of June 1st or two weeks, whatever it is. I just don't want to mess up our, our plans that's being submitted to the state of California. But at the very last paragraph of the agreement, throughout the whole entire agreement, it talks about five rooms, room 125 to 130. And then at the bottom of that, it says $50 per night per reserved rooms 131 and 238. That came out of left field for me, and I was wondering if you can explain those two rooms added at the very bottom.
Um, yes, so the, the agreement steps in tiers. On the second tier, the more rooms you rent, the lower the overall cost is. And I don't know if Katie Galvani's, I don't think she's on, but she's the one who, the logistics did the, the work on this for us at the EOC, or Crystal's on. I don't know if she can weigh in on this as well. I guess they're not on. And so that, that is what that additional, the, the difference in fees are. So the more rooms we book, the higher the tier goes, the less they're going to charge us per room.
And when it says $50 per night per reserved room, is that reserved room to hold on to those rooms or reserved when they're actually in use?
The reserve is we have, we will have five rooms that are there that we can, that are being paid for, whether they're full or not.
Well, it says reserved rooms for 138 and 238. Because again, at the very, the section one, it says, shall reserve a block of six rooms specifically numbered 125 to 130 with the potential to increase the number of reserved rooms to 16. Then at the bottom, it says $75 per night per reserved room 125 to 130. But then it says also agrees to pay owner the sum of $50 per night per reserved room 131 and 238. So I'm confused about the 131 and 238 because it doesn't add up to 16 rooms. It's kind of two rooms on the side that seem to also be reserved and that we're paying $50 per night for those rooms. And so I'm not, I'm not seeing it in section one, but they pop up in section three or section, the third paragraph, the third bullet point. And so since it doesn't add up to the other 10 rooms that we could potentially expand to, and it's not part of the original six that's spoken of in section one, I, I'm looking for a little more detail as to why we're paying $50 per room for 131 and 238.
Okay, so I don't have the document in front of me, so I apologize for that. But my understanding and my memory is the first block of rooms are $75 a night. The more rooms that we book, the rate will go down to $50 a night for the overall cost.
Could I just jump in for a second? This is Carol Hutchingson. I'm hearing from Katie Galvani, who has attempted to get on a Zoom call and apparently is having technical difficulties. But she texted me the answer. She said should be between, and it's a typo. She's saying it's a, it's a typographical error. Does that address that? And, and in defense of Director Pomeroy, her department sponsored this agenda item, but other staff did the work on this, the EOC team. And so your board may be asking questions that it would be better to get that team, the representatives of the team, Katie in particular, on the call if we can, if there are more unanswered questions.
Well, okay, but, okay, so I, I'm just gonna weigh in for just a second here because I.
Yeah, there you go, Supervisor Brown.
I can still speak without my camera on.
Yeah, I, I, just talking.
I just want to make sure, and I appreciate your comment, Carol, but in defense of staff that was directed to this by the Director Pomeroy, they have been working on several things and the focus changed daily. And so they, all this stuff was prepared, not at their direction, but, but at hers. So we just need to make sure that, you know, they're following direction. They're not just out doing their own thing.
I've asked Katie Galvani to try again to get into the Zoom meeting if she can.
Yeah, and Crystal Marketan also is texting me and she says she can't get on either. So they were the two that worked on this for the EOC.
Okay, so then hearing that, I, I want to ask Jake if we're having some kind of problem that's preventing people from getting in because anybody should be able to jump in at any time. Jake?
Nope, there's nothing on this end. It looks like it wouldn't be stopping. I see Katie Galvani just jumped in.
Okay.
Tell people we're coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
So Katie, can you hear us yet? There she is. Katie, are, do you have audio yet?
It does not look like she has audio enabled.
Okay, so you can give her just a moment.
She might try to call via phone.
And Crystal Marketan is also hopefully gonna come online.
So while we're waiting for them, I'm also receiving a message from my assistant speaker that says he doesn't believe it's a typo. The first block is $50.
Hey, hang on a second, Denise. Katie is on the line now and, and has audio, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Through the source. Thank you.
Go ahead, Katie.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. Um, there's a specific question I think you typed in. Hopefully you've heard or got the information on what we're looking for clarification. So Katie, go ahead.
Yes, I did. And in the section three monthly rent of section four rent?
Yes.
The first, the six rooms that are being reserved, occupied or not, as we downsize, is $75 a night because they're, they are bigger rooms. If we go back up to the 16, it's $50 per night for the original block of 16 rooms. It should say the sum of $50 per night per reserved room between 131 and 238.
And Mr. Chair, Crystal Marketan is also in the room, but wasn't able or didn't have the option to raise her hand. Crystal, do you have audio? Can you speak? Or Jake, can you unmute, Crystal?
Trying to find her here. One second. Do you know, does she join on a phone? Let's see. This is her.
She says she does have a comment but needs to be unmuted. And so I've asked her to identify herself, so you know what to unmute, Jake.
All right, well, while we're waiting for Crystal, Bruno, does that clarify? Did you get the clarification that you were looking for on that?
And, and I do, and I, I'd like to clarify it further. So obviously, we're reserving six rooms that we're paying $75 per night. And should the need arise, expand the number of rooms. An additional 10 rooms is what I think it needs to say there because between 138 and 238, it seems like we're adding 100 rooms. And it should just say an additional 10 rooms between 131 and 238. That way, it says how many rooms in addition that we would be getting. I think that would be a, a thing. Because every hotel number is slightly differently. We don't know how many are on each floor. And so it would be helpful to have that inside the, it would make me feel more comfortable knowing that it matches what it says on top, which says 16 maximum rooms.
We, we can do that.
Thank you, Katie.
You're welcome.
Was Crystal getting in? I heard some noise, so.
I still haven't identified which user Crystal is. Kathy Sederlin was also trying to get in and may, as our disaster finance chief, may have something to say. But do you see her coming in, Jake?
Uh, yes, she came in. Kathy, yeah, Kathy is here. It doesn't look like she has audio enabled yet, though.
So Crystal says she is desktop computer. And so I don't know if that helps you identify her, Jake, or not.
Uh, it does rule some people out, but it doesn't, I don't.
I'm gonna tell her to join with her phone.
And, and while, while we're waiting, question for Director Pomeroy. The benchmarks that the state of California has set for us to attest that we can move on in stage two on our own, does it include having these rooms solidified and reserved?
And it includes, the benchmark to meet the 15% includes these blocks of rooms, yes.
Okay, so I, I want to make sure we don't mess that up. But I am still also just voicing that I am in favor at maybe a June 1st date to do an RFP so that all our hoteliers in the new atmosphere that they're in can make the decision on whether or not to be included in this or not. I get that the separation of one here, one there makes things more difficult, but I think it's only fair to put it out to bid at one point for the fact that things are different now.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify the 138, 238 is not 100 rooms.
No.
It's a block of 16 rooms in one particular building that is separated from the rest of the hotel. So that, that's only 16 rooms, so that 138 to 238.
Yeah, and, and that's why I was asking if we can add an additional word of a maximum of 10 additional rooms reserved between 131 and 238. That way, it actually, it helps us spell it out.
Yeah, no, no worries.
Yeah.
Yeah, happy to fix that.
So Mr. Chair, Kathy Sederlin has come into the room.
Okay, go ahead, Kathy, if you have a comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so it looked like you were looking for a breakdown of those costs on that $81,000. The $81,000 is the maximum that would be paid on this particular contract. And it's based on also the first portion of this was the first 30 days, which $24,000 has already been expended. So your additional block of rooms for the additional 60 days for the six rooms is your $27,000. And if you expand to the 10 additional rooms, that's another $30,000. So that's the $81,000. But that's a maximum this contract would go to if you reserved the entire block for the next 60 days. And I'm not sure if that's what you were looking for. And, and you're correct, it should be, it says and, that's, the and should be a two on that block of rooms for the second 10.
Jake, I hope you're seeing someone joining by phone, and I hope that's Crystal Marketan. Are you seeing anybody coming in?
I did see somebody join. And I just put, I just muted them because they were talking in the background. But I can, a new thing, do we want to give them?
Yeah, I believe that's Crystal.
Okay, is this you, Crystal? I have a muted phone.
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so specifically, as I recall, initially, when we were looking for rooms, there were no responses. And I think the situation has radically changed since then in that we now understand kind of what's unfolding in our county. And at that time, I believe, you know, we did receive no's from all motels and hotels that were called by my staff at the Department of Social Services. And I think largely it was, you know, fear of the unknown based on that. And so while that has changed as things have evolved and we aren't seeing the surge that we thought we would in Lake County, you know, we were able to get Skylark and also the Lamp lighter in Clear Lake for Project Room Key. But I think, you know, as with everything about the COVID response, there was just a lot of unknown territory at that time. But I can confirm that we, my staff did call hotels and motels more than one time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, Board, any more questions? At this point? Any more comments? All right, here, no more questions or comments from the board at this time? We'll go ahead and open it up for a public comment.
No email comments on this one, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Jake, can you open up the room, please?
Uh, yes, I did have a hand up from Denise. Denise, I lowered that. I think that was stale. I think that was an old hand raise.
Yeah, I have noticed, no comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Denise.
So, yeah, I don't have any raised hands, so we could unmute the floor if you would like. Um, I will, let's see. Sorry. Ah, here we go.
Okay.
No, I, I couldn't find the button. I'm sorry. Okay, so the floor is now unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close it back up, Jake, and bring it back to the board for Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, I just, thank you, Bruno, for asking that question about 15% because that was my understanding as well. That kind of solidified it for me. I do like the idea of, in a couple of weeks or so, doing an RFP. That sounds like it'd be something ideal to do. But in the meantime, like, you know, that's one of the two things I think we need to work on right now for our, for our accelerated plan is the 15%, so, of homeless people, that is. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Supervisor Crandall. Supervisor Rob?
I, I just wanted to check in. It seems that we would have consensus to request an RFP at the earliest convenience without breaking our state plan submission. Do we need to make that into a motion or is consensus enough to?
Fine, to give direction to staff, sir.
Consensus is fine, confirmed by Anita. Supervisor Scott?
Just that I would agree with the RFP process, but I know I was on many calls when staff was scrambling, trying to get hotels to engage with us. So there was many calls where they were trying to work on contacting hotels and getting the no from them. So I, I don't think we're gonna see anything different come from it, but, you know, I'm in favor of going forward with that.
And I also was on, you know, if I could.
Go ahead, Supervisor. Go ahead, Bruno. Supervisor Bruno?
Yeah, I was on those calls too. And I was making some of the calls and it was a different time, just like Crystal explained. And I know, you know, Knokta came on board and actually, to be honest with you, I didn't, on the dozens of calls that I was on, it must have been different meetings because I don't remember Supervisor Scott being on any of the ones that I was involved with. So maybe she's getting different information at a different time.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, based on what I'm hearing, I believe the board wants to, there's, it sounds like there is support to approve a contract today, but that it needs to be amended to a shorter period of time and a reduced compensation level at, at this point. Am, am I hearing that correctly? Because if, if that is correct, what I would suggest is that we give the staff that have worked on this time to do that and bring it back to your board later today. time to do that and bring it back to your board later today, so you can approve it, um, thus creating the space you've asked for, for an RFP for a longer term arrangement. Does that sound right?
Well, it's a little bit, um, you know, I've kind of heard both. Yeah, you, you kind of got it right there, but we all have two issues, um. I will say, um, whether or not I was exactly on the call, I know that, uh, from day one, uh, there was a lot of talk about getting the hotels, uh, being a hotel owner. I know that they reached out to uh, all the hotel owners, because we're a hotel owner also, and, um, so, Crystal, I want to thank you for all that hard work. Um, and there wasn't a response. Uh, this thing is unknown where we're going, and in two weeks, we don't know where we're gonna be um, with this, uh, whether good or bad, nobody knows, nobody has that answer. So, I, I think what we were talking about, um, was doing an RFP at some point. I would like some clarification from the board and the members who'd like to do that, because this is one of the steps of helping us move forward. Um, and I don't know how that will be affected, and I don't think anybody on this board knows at this point. If we say, well, we got a two-week contract, or we're doing RFP, and, oh, we'll get it later, how that's gonna affect us? Um, because I don't know if the response is going to change, uh, for hotel owners. Um, and, you know, I think there's only a couple of hotel owners that sit on this board at this point, um, that can speak directly to that. Uh, so, uh, we, um, you know, yeah, I guess, I, I would like some more clarification too, because what I would like to do is move forward with the beautiful plan that I seem put together, it needs more work to be done by Dr. Pace and, and everybody, so we could go to the state. And, um, I know this is one of the key ingredients, uh, or key components to getting that done, so, uh, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, that may be what you, I think you've hit the nail on the head in terms of what staff was saying in terms of what they need for their accelerated plan. Do they need specifically these numbers? Or could it even be reduced without jeopardizing your board going forward with the plan?
Yep.
This is Denise. Hello?
Go ahead Denise.
Hi, so, yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Remember in the presentation on the fifteen percent, the sixteen rooms from Skylark are part of that calculation that allows us to meet that fifteen percent.
Yeah. Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, what I don't see in this is a termination clause. And I think that if we added a termination clause, that that would allow us to do an RFP, terminate, and then go with whatever else would be a better deal. That way we don't change the end date, it's still July tenth. But there is no termination clause of early termination, just that, um, no event will this term exceed the period or the cost that we're putting in there. Uh, so if we have a termination clause in there, then at least it gives us the ability to say, okay, well, we put out an RFP, we're gonna cancel, we're gonna go with a different, uh, uh, hotel, or we're gonna stay with the same hotel. Uh, usually, this would come along with the termination clause, and it does not have one, which does not give us the ability to back out of it.
Well, Mr.
Go ahead, go ahead Anita.
Mr. Chair, if I could, this is an amendment. So the only provisions that are here are the ones that are changing. I don't have the original here in front of me, but staff, either Katie or Crystal, someone would have that, I'm sure, handy. There should be a, uh, termination provision of some kind, I would hope. Uh, if not, uh, then certainly the amendment could reflect one.
I guess the only comment I would have on, on that issue or that request is this is probably a business decision that these individuals made. If you, to write a contract to say, I can cancel at any time, when you've made a business decision on how you're gonna move forward with your business and, and, you know, you're probably making that so you're gonna make some money, uh, to have a clause in there that says, well, you know, we can change our mind anytime, and, you know, even though we've gone through all this process. I think that's gonna be pretty challenging from a business standpoint, uh, if you're looking at negotiating, um, something with somebody, that's, uh,
That's very true. And there is, there is an end date in the amendment that goes only to July tenth, so it's not as if it's open-ended.
And, and the original document included the termination clause, um, it, it, and that is seven days with written notice.
I think that's good enough for me right there, it's already there. So we don't change the end date, July tenth it is. The, uh, termination is there, and, and I think that we look at doing an RFP. Why? Because we're spending, uh, tax money, and especially in this situation we're in, where all of the hotels are closed, we should make sure in this new atmosphere that everyone has the potential to, uh, uh, jump on this.
Okay, so it sounds like we had some clarification there, uh, as far as the path moving forward. And, um, is there, uh, anything else, uh, that we need to get taken care of here in a motion form, as far as action?
So, I will go ahead and move to approve the amendment, uh, Amendment One to Emergency Occupancy Agreement for the Use of Skylark Shore Resort, with the amendment of the additional, uh, wording for the, uh, an additional ten rooms reserved between rooms one thirty-one and two thirty-eight. And that is my motion.
Thank you Supervisor, is there a second?
Second.
So Supervisor Sabatier motions, Supervisor Scott seconds, go ahead and do a roll call vote, please. Carol?
Sorry, struggling to find the mute button. Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you staff, thank you very much Denise, thank you everybody. Um, go ahead and moving along to item four point four, our eleven fifteen AM item, consideration of COVID nineteen, a Great Plates Delivered, uh, program. I think I read that right, yes.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Administrative Office and Social Services, uh.
Crystal Marketan and I are gonna, um, tag team this presentation. Um, and we, um, had the opportunity to meet with Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Scott a couple of times to explore this program, and so, uh, Crystal, will you go ahead and start?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. So, um, Great Plates was first introduced on April twenty-fourth as a program for a different, uh, subset of the senior population in California. It had an end date of May tenth, which caused some confusion early on, um, that was later extended. And so now we're bringing it, um, before the board for consideration, um, of, you know, on implementation. Um, so how does the program work? Local administrator, which in this case would be DSS, partners with multiple local food providers to look, deliver three nutritious meals each day to qualified individuals enrolled, enrolled in the program. The administrator is, um, responsible for outreach to identify eligible individuals, uh, contracting with local restaurants, and determining how meals are delivered. And I will say that, um, in all of the program guidance, um, the delivery process um, kind of relies on the availability of things like Grubhub, Uber Eats, uh, taxis. Um, it does mention school bus drivers, um, I think in the event that they are out of work, which is likely the case. So, uh, selection of delivery services, um, and individuals delivering meals all must be background checked. Um, and then, of course, uh, weekly data reporting is also part of that for the administrator. Um, which food providers qualify for participation? Uh, food providers must have, one, the ability to meet volume and strict nutritional standards, uh, two, source local produce and meat, and prioritize local jobs and worker retention among other requirements. Hundred percent of the meals must be supplied by the food provider, not currently participating in a state or federal meal service program. And that, um, becomes an important point later on here. Um, at this point in time, the program is set to run until June tenth. However, um, the state does intend to request extent thirty-day, uh, extensions as necessary. Um, who qualifies for enrollment? It would be individuals who are sixty-five or older, or those between the ages of sixty and sixty-four who are at high risk as defined by the CDC. Individuals must live alone or with one other program-eligible adult. Participants must not be eligible for or currently receiving assistance from other state or federal nutrition assistance programs. And that does include meals on wheels and senior congregant meals, or have received such assistance in the last thirty days. Participants must earn no more than six hundred percent of the federal poverty limit, which equals, um, for individuals, seventy-four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars a year, and for couples, um, less than a hundred and one, four hundred and sixty dollars, um, annually. Individuals must self-affirm an inability to prepare or obtain meals. Uh, and then how is eligibility determined? Again, by the Department of Social Services, um, interested individuals would be, um, deep, um, interviewed using a script of questions provided by the state to determine eligibility. Individuals must self-certify eligibility for the program, and program costs for individuals later found ineligible for the program would be paid entirely by the county. And, um, I, you know, I do have a little more program information, but I think at this point, um, we'll let Carol talk about funding and reimbursement.
Thanks, Crystal. And so, um, as your board well knows, the senior population in Lake County is much higher per capita than other California counties. Um, according to the latest data, we have it somewhere around twenty-three percent of our senior population, of our population are seniors age sixty-five and over, which constitutes a little over fifteen thousand people. The statewide average is more like thirteen percent of, of other counties are, um, in that age group. So for the purposes of projecting costs, we built an estimate based on an assumption that uh, five hundred citizens would be served in this program. Um, the cost of five hundred citizens over thirty days, um, would be just under one million dollars, nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, however, the state and feds have indicated a willingness to front-load, uh, half of their shares. And so what it would require is to serve five hundred thousand, the county would have to put upfront uh, about four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from the general fund for, um, one month of service. And then later on, in terms of our claiming processes, I checked in with Disaster Finance Chief Kathy Sederlin to just, um, get a sense of how long reimbursements are taking, um, from FEMA. And, um, so we would be reimbursed for all of that four hundred and thirty-three thousand, um, except approximately sixty-two thousand dollars. Um, and we would wait, well, she tells me that the reimbursement process varies greatly. Um, if, if all of our documentation is perfect, it would be possibly as soon as three months. Um, but the final closeout can take well over a year. And of course, if there's any hiccup in our documentation at all, um, we, you know, we would risk not getting reimbursed at all. Um, so, um, the other point that Crystal made earlier uh, is about the fact that, um, seniors who are presently receiving meals through our senior centers, the um, Area Agency on Aging Meal Programs, they're not eligible for this. Uh, they presently receive one meal a day, and it is at lunchtime. Um, the, um, and, and the citizens who qualify for this will get three meals a day. Um, and, and just, uh, as, as you know, the senior center programs don't have uh, an income limit, so this same client population could conceivably reach out and be served by the senior centers. Um, the senior centers recently got, um, some augmented funding due to the COVID crisis through the AAA. And, um, and, and certainly, it, it, you know, I, I don't want to give the impression that the capacity of the senior centers is without limits. They, they do have limits, they, they do a great job. Um, but, um, the fact that this program is quite different than what seniors served in those programs uh, are receiving is a concern to us. Um, you know, in that, uh, those folks are just receiving the one, uh, lunchtime meal delivered today. So, um, the other point that I thought important to clarify for your consideration, uh, Crystal talked earlier about the fact that each county, or excuse me, or each jurisdiction can have one local administrator. And in some cases, we're hearing that, uh, that, that cities are interested. And so we did reach out to the city managers in both cities to ask if they had any interest in administering this program before we began our exploration. And, um, they both, uh, indicated that they, you know, that they were comfortable with the county, um, uh, exploring the program, and did not appear to have an interest at this time. So the restaurant providers were, uh, also supposed to, uh, that were interested, were supposed to fill out a, for the lack of a better term, I'll call it a, a letter of interest. And there were, um, so far at least, there were six, uh, excuse me, seven, six or seven restaurants that, um, indicated an interest. And, and Crystal, did you happen to hear if there were more since we gathered this information? I, I believe they extended the, um, time period for, for submitting a letter of interest. So are there more providers than what we knew of last week?
No, not that I'm aware.
Okay, and so the food providers so far that indicated an interest it, um, include KFC of Lakeport, Stonefire Pizza in Hidden Valley in Lakeport, Studebaker's, uh, Coffee House in Kelseyville, Rosie Cook's in Kelseyville, Mike's Breakfast and Lunch in Lucerne. So Crystal, back to you, did I miss any point, or do you want to add more?
Um, just a couple of things. Um, one of the things that, um, I think is concerning is that the program actually specifically excludes, um, people with an income level um, whereby they are eligible to, for state or federal nutrition assistance. And so, and, and that's the bulk of people, I believe, in Lake County, and definitely that we serve through the AAA. Um, so if you, actually, if you're earning below, um, that level, you actually are not, even if you have not been receiving CalFresh, SNAP, or Meals on Wheels, um, you are excluded from applying for this. Um, and then also, um, so, I, I, there was a poll then by the California Welfare Directors Association, of which I'm a member, and of the twenty small counties, only one county indicated that they would be moving forward, and I believe, um, it's due to a concern that I share, which is how, um, it would be feasible to transport meals three times a day within the, um, constraints of the funding to the seniors, given that we don't really have what we would call urban housing in Lake County. And in many cases, it would be delivery, um, in rural areas. And so I think the cost of that would be considerable. And that, that's basically all.
That completes our report, Mr. Chair, and, um, and our two supervisors that worked with us on this may want to add to the discussion.
Thank you Supervisor Scott?
Um, yes, I would, yeah, we, we met last week, and, um, I was under the understanding that these meals would be provided to the seniors that really need them. Uh, my question was, can we supplement the one meal that they have and give them the other two meals? And we were informed, you know, that was not possible. Um, we kind of came to the agreement that this, this program wouldn't work for our community, but we wanted to make sure that we had this conversation in, um, in our open meetings, so we could hear from the public. But I, we didn't feel that, um, our tax dollars providing meals to people that are making between like seventy-four thousand and a hundred thousand dollars, I don't think our public would be very happy that we were providing free meals. I know our restaurants are hurting. Um, I think we need to be looking in a different, different area, um, to help our restaurants, because this program is not gonna be providing meals to those seniors that really, that really need the meals. I'll let EJ kind of chime in.
Yeah, um, after Supervisor. Sorry about that, Chair.
Go ahead Supervisor.
That, that was my, uh, yeah, that was my initial, uh, thought was to help the, help the restaurants that needed serious help, you know, this would be a way for them to actually, you know, have some work and, and get some things done for the local people. There's another, there's another restaurant I knew wanted to apply, but it's not on, but either way, um, just thinking of a way to get people, um, some food. Um, once we started looking further. Once we started looking further into the ramifications of qualifications, realized that there was a lot of people that would be left out and there would possibly be a lot more mistakes where we wouldn't be reimbursed. So you're looking at, you know, hundreds of thousands to almost millions of dollars that might be expended and then not being able to be reimbursed. You know, so, so that was, that was the really, that was the real struggle and, and, you know, trying to find every angle to make that happen just didn't seem like it would, it would work out. So, so yeah, it, it's a very difficult thing in the rural area as well. And, you know, we were talking about trying to spread it out through the, the county, like one in Nice, one in Kelseyville, one in Lakeport. We started doing all of those types of mindsets and thoughts, but it just didn't seem to still be able to pan out when you talk about being reimbursed and the, the county carrying the cost and the situation we're in physically, so.
Thank you Supervisor Crandall. Supervisor Sabatier?
I mean, from the get-go, when I heard about this, I, I worried about the impact to our senior centers. Would it take anything away from them potentially? When right now they, they are being asked of much more than their usual amount of help that they provide and assistance that they provide to communities. So that was definitely something for me. I mean, it, it, I, I, I'm not saying I want to do what I'm going to say, but I'd like to know what $60,000 could do to help our senior centers to be able to provide more because those are truly the people in need right there that are going to senior centers. I don't know about you guys, but I, I've heard a lot of, I've had a lot of calls about businesses wanting to open and so on and so forth. But I haven't gotten any calls about people saying I can't get food. So that, that to me is not necessarily on my radar. It's definitely a concern of mine as we keep going. But it's not something that's been brought to my attention at this moment in time. I have received phone calls from our senior centers saying, we're struggling, what can you do to help? So I, I think that in, in the long run, we want our restaurants to be here in the future. But in the long run, we also desperately need our senior centers to be here as well. And I don't want to do anything that's going to jeopardize their ability and capability to keep going.
Supervisor Scott?
I'd have to agree with that. That was one comment that we did talk about was this segment of seniors are not the ones reaching out saying that they need help with meals. It's the, it's the other population that we cannot serve with this program. I think we need, I think the county's doing a great job putting out where food is available. I think we need to keep pushing. There's a lot of food giveaways, food banks. There's options to get food. I think we need to keep pushing that out. Community is absolutely amazing. And I think as we start opening up, I'm hoping our businesses will start doing better. I know there's a program that the CTAs are looking at for next, next week, trying to promote our restaurants and get people in there supporting them.
Yeah, I agree. Obviously a good intended program, but a lot of logistics to make it work here in a rural community and bringing it right on the head. Supporting our local senior centers has, has been very important. I know each and every one of us are doing that at this point. But I know here our local senior centers serving over, you know, they're out, they're doing drive-through. I think there were over almost 90 meals yesterday as far as a drive-through, which is phenomenal numbers as they do that each week. And I've seen the numbers in this report about what's being served here through our senior centers in Lake County. I think it was 27,000 or something like that meals in March. And then April, I think there were some other numbers. It just keeps going up. So yeah, I, I would agree with continuing to support them in any dollar amounts would be the most important thing that we could do. But that isn't the conversation we're having. But ultimately, they need a big shout out for serving our community and our elders right now because they're all doing a great job. So what I'd like to do is open this up for a public comment. We can start with, all right, opening up the room Jake. And I just, I want to do a time check here on things. I know there is a call that needs to happen today with Bruno and a couple of other.
Mr. Chair, if I could speak to that? I was just notified by Maguire's staff that that has to be canceled because of issues going on at the Capitol today. So it'll be restated. It is not happening.
Well, we're still going to take a lunch. I know there were some important things, you know, that, that were, at least from what I understand, there was going to be some new stuff coming out from the governor's office. So let's continue through this item and then we will take the lunch as soon as we can. So go ahead and open this up to, to the room at this point. Jake, can you open the room up?
Yep, no problem. The floor is unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay Jake.
All right.
Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close it up. Carol, bring it back to you. Do we have any written comment at this time on this item, Carol?
I do have one. It comes to you from Lorna Sides, registered dietitian in Lakeport. And she's speaking in support of the program, comments about the struggles our local restaurants are having, thinks it would be a help to our local restaurants and a tiny cost to the county. And she is suggesting that we have county employees who are currently furloughed administer this program and suggesting the Lake County Behavioral Health Department.
Okay, and that's our one comment that has come in.
That is the only one. Thank you.
Okay. I see we do have a hand up. I see a hand came up.
Yes, a hand came up here.
Okay Melissa, go ahead.
Soundtrack. Good morning. I had sent a chat comment as you opened up this conversation that the Guest Light Grill in Lakeport was interested in this program. And I don't want to speak for, for Deanne, but after hearing a complete explanation of the program, I think that most of us thought this would help our most challenged seniors. So I, it, it doesn't seem that that's even possible. So it sounds like it's a program, as has already been stated, that won't work for us. So I just wanted to share that.
Melissa, thank you very much for your comments.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're, we're going to go ahead and bring it back to the board to finish this up and then we're going to go ahead and take a lunch break. Thank you Melissa. Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
And I just want to state it for all of us, and it's something I think all the time, but also for the public. We're supposed to only pay a small percentage of this entire program, but we're also not being promised 100% that we'll get the reimbursements from FEMA and others. We know we've seen our fire relief not being paid in full before from our federal government. We've seen stuff taken back from other emergencies. And right now, this is a nationwide emergency that FEMA is trying to help out every jurisdiction. I just say we can't count on 100% reimbursements from FEMA and we need to be careful in how we spend our money. So that's just a comment I wanted to make.
Thank you Supervisor Sabatier. Supervisor Scott?
No, just, I agree with what, everything that was said. And I know this, this was just direction to staff, so I don't know if we need a motion to move forward. It sounds like four of us.
Yeah, it sounds like we have a consensus from the board on, on this program for Lake County. Any more comment from, from the board at this point?
Thank you supervisors and thank you Crystal.
Yes, thank you very much everyone who worked on delving into this program. Like we said, one more well-intentioned program, but is not going to fit for our small community here. So with that, we're going to go ahead and take a lunch break at this point. We will be back at, well, well, let me ask the board here. We have one more item for the morning comment here. I know that the phone call was canceled. So let's go through, let's, let's, let's go ahead and do 4.5 and then we'll take a lunch break. Let's hope that that takes about 15, 20 minutes. You know, it's pretty, so let's move to item 4.5 for the 11:30 AM consideration status update on tax default land sale. Is Barbara on?
It doesn't look like Barbara's on. Yeah, I don't see her.
Let me see if I can contact her quickly, Mr. Chair.
If you can't, then we will just, we will go to lunch. Well, being that she's not on, let's just, let's, let's just go to lunch. Because I imagine it's going to take a few minutes to get a hold of.
Yeah, and just so you know, Mr. Chair, we have invited employees if they choose to show up at 1. So perhaps you could move it to quite a bit later in the day to, you know, so that we don't have a lot of employees waiting at 1 if they do show up.
Okay.
So you have several timed items in a row. Perhaps you could take it up after those timed items, the last one being at 2 PM. So I could suggest to Ms. Ringan to show up at, say 10 after 2. Would that be okay?
Yeah, 2:15.
Okay, I'll tell her that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and break for lunch at this point and we will be back at 1 PM. All right, so it's 1 o'clock. We're going to go ahead and reconvene our May 12 meeting of Board Supervisors for Lake County. Our 4.5 item, we're going to take up a little bit later in the agenda, probably around 2:15. And we've conveyed that to our tax collector. And what I'd like to start off with is section 5 here, approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda, we are ready to go, right? Okay, go ahead. Okay, thank you very much Sam. So we'll go ahead and open up the meeting. I'll restate again, item 4.5 will take up at 2:15 later on today. And what I'd like to start with right off the bat at 1 o'clock here is approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are usually non-controversial. We approved. Do we have any items that need to be pulled today? Yes Supervisor Sabatier?
I know that I received an email from the administrative office to pull item 5.13.
That is correct. We're asking for a little more time to stat and we'll come back to you later.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other items that need to be pulled from the board? All right, hearing none. Any items from the public, any items that need to be pulled from the public? So Jake, can you open up the room?
Yes, yes, I will unmute the floor here. Okay, so the floor is unmuted. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Today we are, this is the consent agenda item. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be pulled? Would like to request that be pulled. Okay, hearing none. Go ahead Jake, close it back up and we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.12 and 5.14.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, go with Supervisor Scott seconds. Carol, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. We're going to go ahead and add our 1 o'clock item here. Our 4.6 item, 1 PM, a presentation of employee service awards. And this is the first time we've done it virtual, so I hope everybody's here and go ahead Carol. Or Pam, whoever's going to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to do it because Pam did not have a microphone unfortunately. But as you know, we agendized this for March, in March, for a board meeting in March, but we pulled it because of the COVID crisis and we don't want to let COVID interfere with our ability to recognize our employees as they continue to work hard for us every day and especially so throughout disaster. And the employees were invited to be here today and I see some of them in the Zoom room. Today, we will be recognizing employees that have surpassed 10 years, 15 years, 25 and 30 years of employment with the county. So it's really something special. And for employees that surpass the five-year mark, they will be receiving their certificates in their departments. So Jake, do I have the ability to share my screen?
Yes, yes, you could do that.
Okay. So, let me minimize that. Okay, so we're presenting today's service awards, thanking our valued staff members for their dedication, loyalty, hard work and commitment. Starting with the 10 years of service group. And I want to thank Human Resources for putting together this little presentation. They were able to gather up ID card photos. So we actually have photos of most of our employees. Our first 10-year recipient is Jeff Hawes, IT specialist over network administration in the Information Technology Department. Ryan MacArthur, Building Inspector One in Community Development. Justin Newton, Deputy Sheriff One, excuse me, Sheriff Two in the Sheriff's Department. Michelle Dunia, Eligibility Specialist Supervisor at Social Services. Crystal Hernandez, also Eligibility Specialist Supervisor at Social Services. Roxanne Wyper, Eligibility Specialist Two at Social Services. Dennis Wilson, Water, Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator, Special Districts. Now we're moving into the 15-year group. And before I recognize these folks one by one, we have, I have a special picture of two 15-year employees that are about to receive their awards. And here they are showing you how they are complying with social distancing and mask wearing. So are you able to see that?
Yep, excellent.
Chris Avante here and Marcy Harrison here, both with the Auditor Controller's Office. We're proud of you and thank you both. So back to our PowerPoint with the 15-year folks. The first of which is Chris Avante. And Chris is our supervising payroll analyst two in the Auditor Controller's Office. And here's Marcy Harrison without her mask, both of these two are without their masks, Chief Deputy Auditor Controller in the Auditor's Office. Kara Salmon, Survey Technician Two in the Department of Public Works. Ty Hockett, Deputy Sheriff Two Corrections in the Sheriff's Department. Celia Jimenez, Sergeant Corrections for the Sheriff's Department. Sandra Arnold, Office Services Supervisor Two in Behavioral Health. Lori Grog, Mental Health Team Leader, Behavioral Health. Daniel Driver, Deputy Probation Officer Two. And that says sheriff, but it actually should say the probation department. We're sorry for that typo.
And that's Officer Three.
Oh, yes, so sorry. Officer Three, thank you Supervisor. Amy Stevenson, Deputy Probation Officer Three. That says sheriff also. It is probation, so sorry. John Drury, Deputy Sheriff Sergeant in the Sheriff's Department. Kathy Sokolowski, Civilian Coroner, and, and she is also in the Sheriff's Department. Nicole Gentry, Office Assistant at the UC Cooperative Extension. Moving on to our 20 years of service award recipients. We start that group with Sue Newton, Child Support Officer Three at Child Support Services. Kathy O'Connell, Legal Secretary Three in the County Council's Office. Alicia Ayala, Public Works Fiscal Coordinator in the Public Works Department. Susan West, Deputy Sheriff Two Corrections in the Sheriff's Department. Vicky Cortez, Eligibility Specialist Three at Social Services. And the last of our 15-year recipients is George Hornung, also known as Scott, Utility Systems Compliance Coordinator at Special Districts.
Carol, that's. Uh, Carol, that says 20 years.
Uh, he is in the 20-year group. That's right. I was in the 20-year group. Did I make a mistake, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, you just said 15-year, and he's a 20-year employee.
Okay, so yeah, I thought I had announced that I had moved into the 20-year group. Sorry if I misspoke. So moving on to the 25 years of service. We'll start with Kathy Locatos, Programmer Analyst Two for Information Technology. Our only 25-year recipient today. As you know, we, we do this every six months, and so we'll have more next time. The 30 years of service award recipients. Really getting up there with these folks, and I don't mean age, I mean time. Starting with Tammy Widener. She is the Deputy Director of Child Support Services at Child Support. Chris Macedo, our UnderSheriff with the Sheriff's Department. And Barbara Ringan, our Treasurer Tax Collector, 30 years of service. We are really grateful to all of these uh, employees who are receiving your Years of Service Award today, Supervisors. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for their commitment. Yeah, I know it's the best we can give them.
As I said, a number of them are in the room. Um, I don't see any of them on video, but uh, it's possible that some of them might want to speak. I'm not sure. So I'll leave that open to you.
Yeah, um, yeah, if anyone would like to say something, Jake, I guess, yeah, you can open the room, definitely.
All right, I will open up the floor here. All right, the floor isn't muted. If you'd like to make a comment, please uh, state your first and last name. Sheriff's having some fun.
All right, I think, all right, the um, if no one would like to say anything, obviously we'd like to say thank you, everybody, for all your commitment and long years. We have someone who would like to say something. Uh, you can go ahead and uh, speak at this point.
Mr. Chair, I'm figuring out he wants to say something.
Marcy's on video. Did you want to?
Yeah, I see Marcy.
Say hi.
We see some of the sheriff folks walking around too. Yeah, we're trying to figure out how to zoom. Zoom in on the undersheriff. Yeah, we saw half of them there for a while. There you go.
There they are, their masks. Good.
Okay, I know, um, you know, usually just open it up. If anyone would like to say something, go ahead and make a comment now. We want to thank all you for your long-term services and uh, just your dedication in county. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to thank them in this, wow, what we're going through right now, the dedication for them to continue the work and to come to work every day, um, regardless of what is out there. Just amazing people. And I like the presentation of what that Carol did. I think we need to continue with that even when we do get back in person. Cause there's a lot of staff that aren't able to make it to our meetings.
Yeah.
We can do that. We're evolving technologically.
Okay, we'll go ahead. Uh, any employees like to make a comment? You have an opportunity right now? Uh, go ahead. Go ahead, Sheriff. Go ahead, Chris.
I, I just like to thank everybody for the 30 years and I am retiring next month. Uh, it's been an honor and absolute privilege to work with everybody. Not just the Sheriff's Houghs, but for all the county government folks. It's, it's, it's a privilege and an honor. So thank you um, for the chance to, to work with you and alongside you. But it's, it's been terrific. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. And I know you're greatly appreciated with all the folks who worked for all these years, all the disasters. Thank you very much.
Uh, I, I wanna add something.
Supervisor, Supervisor Brown, sorry, Supervisor Brown came on. Go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
All this, I want to say thanks to all the employees, but especially to Chris. Chris has been a dedicated community member, deputy. He, he epitomizes law enforcement and the common sense that comes with it. He's um, he's, I, I've, I've been proud to have had him as a friend for nearly the entire time that uh, that he has been a deputy. And um, and I still hold him as somebody that I've valued and respected and admired for this entire time that he's been here, and he is gonna be greatly missed.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Sabatier?
No, I, I echo those same sentiments. I think uh, e- especially in law enforcement, 30 years, you've definitely seen a roller coaster ride of uh, laws working for you, laws working against you, changes within our society. Uh, it's, it's uh, definitely been a tough ride in the last five, six years with our emergencies and everything. It's only uh, made it that much more um, the, the loyalty and the dedication to remain here and to serve our community means that much more to us. Um, but I think for everybody that's on the list that we saw today from 10 years all the way to 30 years, uh, your dedication is, is, is so much more than just the years that you put into the service. Uh, the knowledge that you've gained, the understanding of why we do the things that we do. Uh, that's not something that anybody can just jump in and, and learn. That's, that's years of experience. And again, it, it uh, it says a whole lot more than just the years of service that you've provided. Um, it, it takes a full team to do what government needs to do and every single cog in the gears uh, make a difference. And so thank you to everyone on the list today, as well as all of our staff. Uh, but to show off the dedication and loyalty that these uh, individuals have made to their community is, is amazing. So thank you.
I did see a, a couple of other folks come up uh, too. Would anybody else like to make a comment? Who got an award today? Hey, hearing none. Go back to uh, EJ. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. So everyone on the list, I appreciate all your dedication and hard work in the county. You know, the work that you put in is what makes this county, you know, move, you know, really. And so all of your dedication and hard work is just greatly appreciated. Um, in, in, to uh, UnderSheriff Macedo, you know, you will be missed. I, I wrote in the email that I remember when you used to uh, used to control the re- the reservation as a, you know, as a deputy. And I remember uh, one of our high school friends introduced me to you back then. And so, you know, throughout the years I've known you and, and uh, and uh, seen you a couple of times, you know, at the Ranchery on different occasions and always appreciated the way that uh, the level of respect that was given, you know. So uh, again, um, take care and, and good luck, and I have a lot of respect for you.
Excellent.
If I can make one last comment.
I do see Marcy uh, on the phone. Marcy, do you have a comment or anything? I see on your camera there.
Um, I don't have a comment. I just want to um, thank the county for um, the opportunity and the last 15 years have been great and I look forward to many more. And congratulations to my fellow employees for sticking it out with the rest of us, especially during um, times like these. I think it's, it's, it's great that we've come together and um, yeah, I don't know. Uh, here we are.
Yeah, thank you, Marcy. Thank you for your words and thank you for your service.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, Supervisor Sabatier?
I just want to say, I agree with Supervisor Scott, but let's look for some updated photos, cause I saw some people were uh, here for 20 years and it looked like their photo was from 20 years ago as well. So let, let next year, uh, let's look for some updated photos if we can. I know it's a struggle right now, but let, let's hope it's.
Not everybody's aged like we have. Okay. Yeah, once again, thank you, everybody. Glad we're able to put this together again. And yeah, we'll keep moving forward and I agree with the suggestions. Make sure if they can't make it, then get in on their phone, cause I, I just, it's so important to recognize the hard work that everybody does. So thank you so much uh, each and every one of our employees, but the recognition, 5, 10, 20, you know, 30, i- it's unbelievable um, of the dedication and the hard work that you folks do to make this county um, be as beautiful as it is. So thank you very much. Okay. I think uh, we're ready to move uh, to our next item. Carol, thank you very much and Pam for putting that slide together. I think it was excellent. Okay, apologize here. All right, moving right along to our um, uh, 119, excellent, our 115 uh, item. Uh, Presentation of a Proclamation Designating the Week of May uh, 10th through the 16th, 2020 as Wildfire Preparedness Week in Lake County. I do know that we have uh, we have Paul Duncan on today. Um, and what I, what I will do is I will go ahead and uh, read the proclamation, and then I'll turn it over to uh, Paul Duncan to say some words on behalf of the fire chiefs. So we'll go ahead and uh, read uh, Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California Proclamation, Designating the Week of May 10th through the 16th, 2020 as Wildfire Preparedness Week. Whereas wildfire significantly impacts Lake County's environmental, economic, and social well-being, and whereas the residents of Lake County fire-prone communities need to accept responsibility for living in high-fire hazard areas. And whereas residents, property owners, utility providers, evacuation corridor owners, essential services providers uh, must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management and vegetation reduction surrounding their locations in construction and maintenance to, to resist fire ignition and fire spread. And whereas wildfires can occur during any month, and whereas residents, property owners, utility providers, evacuation corridors, and central services providers must stay continuously vigilant and prepared for wildfire throughout the year. Whereas residents, citizens, and guests should be, should take proactive actions immediately during wildland fire and/or other emergencies to keep themselves safe. Now therefore, be proclaimed with the Lake County Board of Supervisors in partnership with Lake County Fire Chiefs Association and the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority supports the Week of May 10th through the 16th, 2020 as Lake County wildfire preparedness and call to action with this year's theme. Be prepared. Wildfire knows no seasons. As a means of education and a call for residents, whereas property owners, utility providers, evacuation corridor owners, and central services providers of Lake County to act and to reduce the wildfire threat, spread and prepare their homes, families, and communities for wildfire and stay prepared throughout the year. Whereas residents and property owners are requested to create 100-foot defensible space, reduce fuels, uh, have your address clearly posted, have a wildland fire-ready set-go plan, prepare for extended periods without electricity. And whereas utilities, providers, phone, cable, fiber, electrical, and all are requested to create defensible space and reduce and/or remove all fuels within 100 feet of infrastructure, stations, transmission line systems, earth-to-sky, and have their address clearly posted. And whereas the evacuation and roadway corridor owners, federal, state, county, city, cities, and private landowners are requested to create defensible space, limb-up ladder fuels, tend to reduce and/or remove all fuels within, within 100 feet of roadways. And whereas essential service providers, hospitals, medical clinics, fire stations, police stations, government facilities, senior centers, care and shelter locations are requested to create defensible space and reduce and remove all fuels within 100 feet of their infrastructure. Have their addresses clearly posted and prepare for the extended periods without electricity. Passed and adopted on this 12th day of May, 2020 and signed by the Board of Chair by the Board of Supervisors. All right, thank you. Excellent. Uh, I can't physically present it to you, but I will turn it over to you, Paul, and we'll get a signature uh, on that and get that turned in. So on the phone we have here, uh, Paul Duncan, uh, who is going to hopefully speak on behalf of all the fire chiefs in coordination uh, with this proclamation today.
Very nice. Thank you, Chief, uh, Chairperson Simon. Can you hear me just fine?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, yeah, just thank you very much for the proclamation. Uh, wildfire knows no season. We typically around this time of year where we transition uh, have a lot of escape control burns. So we appreciate the diligence with folks and their defensible space, making sure that if you do have burn piles, that those are cleared around, uh, and the burn van is in effect. So just as a reminder for that. Um, the public does need to be prepared to take self-protective actions and to take uh, those actions if they feel like they're in danger. So I just want to remind folks, you don't have to wait for the fire department to tell you to leave. Um, if you feel like you're in danger, to go ahead and do that. Um, the other point that I'd like to make is just our, to our utility owners, the folks with ingress and egress um, who uh, have roadways that are maintained to keep those folks in our communities that they have a way to get out, they need to take actions to keep the vegetation down, reduced in those areas to protect the citizens when or if they have to evacuate. So those egress areas are very important for us to get folks out of those communities safely. So again, thank you very much for the proclamation. Uh, we hope for a very short uh, uneventful fire season, and I thank you for your time, Chairperson.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here today to, to give those uh, good words and remind us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along to uh, item 5.2, approved minutes of the Board of Supervisors meetings. Oh, wait, I'm on the wrong. I apologize. I was reading on the wrong one. Here we go. Sorry about that. My computer got messed up. Give me one second. There we go. Uh, our one, our 4.8 item, uh, our 1:20 uh, P. M., Presentation of Annual Report by Lake County PEG TV. Do we have uh, Lake County PEG TV here today?
I see Ed.
I believe Ed is here, if that is Ed Robey. And Jake, would you make it possible for Ed to speak?
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute here. Ed?
It would be Ed Robey, not Ed.
Not Ed.
Unless he's on both.
Oh, there is an Ed Robey. Okay, yes. Ed Robey. There you go.
I can hear you, but I can't see me.
We can hear you.
Okay, I can hear you.
How come you can't see me?
You maybe turn on your video?
Oh, I thought it was.
Just good luck, I guess. There you go.
Okay. So I'm sitting here with the Chair of the PEG TV Board of Directors, Denise Lustelow.
The new chair.
The new chair.
This is Senior Chair.
You're?
You are.
That's for sure. And behind us, I don't know if you can see him back there. Where are you, Thomas?
Right here.
There he is. There's our station manager, Thomas DeWalt. And we are broadcasting to you from the PEG station down at Clear Lake City Hall.
Okay.
So, shall I begin the report?
Yes.
Okay. Um, as required by the agreement between the City of Clear Lake, the City of Lakeport, and the County of Lake for the operation of a public educational and governmental television channel that was adopted in November of 2015, following report from Lake County PEG TV is hereby submitted. Um, the Lake County PEG TV as a Board of Directors that sets policy and, and basically, you know, there's like a board, just like your board, um, as far as the TV station goes. Um, the PEG, the governance structure is set up so that we have five board members, one appointed by each of the three government entities, the county and the two cities. And then we have a public member from the educational community and a uh, a public member at large. Denise is our public member right now.
Ed, uh, I, I just want to make a comment uh, right now and uh, please take this in the best way, but. we just had a long report this morning from our COVID nineteen. Social distancing and masks are something we're looking to try and get out there and I'm just making it aware right now.
Want me to give you the short version?
Well, I'm just, I just want to reiterate, social distancing and masking, especially when you're going to be in closed quarters. So I just need to make a comment.
Well.
There we go.
I'll sit over here.
Sorry, you know, and now you can rotate or something. So I just want to make that clear.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead and keep going.
Okay. Well, anyway, Denise, our new Chair is also the public member. Our member from the educational community is Brock Falkenberg, who's the County Superintendent of Schools. Member from Lakeport is City Council Member Maria Turner. The member from the City of Clear Lake is Russ Purdock. And I am currently the county's appointed member. Now, in February, the Peg Board approved a budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one, which is comprised of actually two budgets. We're required by law to separate our budget into two parts, an operational budget and a capital budget. And this has to do with the way our funding comes in. Some of our funding can only be spent on capital expenses, meaning equipment and, you know, physical things, not employees or, you know, basically staff. And, and we submitted it on time to the three agencies as required by the Peg Agreement. The operating budget projects our revenues to be thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the coming fiscal year and expenses at thirty-three thousand, two hundred dollars, you know, a little higher than our income. But we do have a fund balance carryover of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. So we're not out of balance. We were very, very frugal for a number of years and didn't been a penny that we didn't have to. The operating budget projects, I mean, excuse me, the capital budget projects revenues at fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and expenses of sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars with a fund balance carryover of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. The, the funding for our, our capital budget comes from a fee that we have which was approved by all three entities. We get one percent of the revenues from MediaCom, the cable TV provider. And that's why we're able to have so much money in our capital budget. Now, during last year, we accomplished a number of projects. We funded new cameras and other broadcast equipment in the Board of Supervisors chamber. Anyway, they're installed in operational. You've been using them, and I think everybody's happy with that. We've done a major upgrade to the Peg Station infrastructure down here in Clear Lake City Hall, and I don't know if I can move this around enough, but we purchased a number of different pieces of equipment, and these broadcast things are not cheap, but we we bought a unit that allows us to live stream onto the internet. And we are currently live streaming everything that we can onto the internet using YouTube as the site that you can go to to watch our, our broadcast live and you can also go in there after the fact and watch shows. That we've got there. We've started producing more local content, which is really what the Peg Station's goal is. And we've done a, well, we, during the campaign, the spring campaign season, we conducted interviews with all of the candidates and broadcast them. We have been broadcasting the community forums related to the coronavirus pandemic. And we're basically trying to get out there and be able to broadcast as many local events as possible. One of the, I'll get, um. In the coming fiscal year, we hope to fund new broadcast equipment for the City of Lakeport. Done the county, we've done the City of Clear Lake. Lakeport's next. We're also talking about upgrading the P A system down here that plugs into the broadcast system because sometimes we have issues with it. And also, we're talking about purchasing some equipment, both P A and broadcast equipment, using a technology called Sling, which will allow us to broadcast from anywhere in the county. Live streaming. So we'll be able to broadcast events anywhere. And we're hoping to get, because we can, we have all this money in our capital account. We, we're hoping we can buy a van and put the equipment in it and be able to go around and broadcast either musical events or sporting events or community events of any time. We're working on a project to purchase cameras and video editing computers for the county libraries. And it's funny, I, I didn't realize I should have, but I didn't realize the libraries were closed. Hell, I went to call up the librarian and ask him, I was going to talk to him about this and oh, I'm going to have to wait. I know. I'm still adapting to this new world we're in.
Sorry.
The, we're working on setting up a studio down at the used to be called the Senior Center. Now it's called the Community Center, where we hope to hold classes. We want to be able to teach folks how to make their own shows that we can broadcast. In order for us to be able to broadcast it, the, the audio and the video has to be a certain quality. But what we're planning on doing is having classes, and we're going to get some cameras that we can check out to people, just like you could check out a book. And if you wanted to make a video of some, you know, let's say you were a grandpa and you want to film your granddaughter's soccer game, you could do that, you know, and do it with equipment that'll meet the standards that are good enough. We have to, you know, you have to be able to see it and hear it. So in the plan. And we're also working with the County Museum to produce videos for their oral history program. Now, first with the, with the outbreak of the virus, everything's kind of on hold right now. So but we can go ahead and, and purchase our equipment and get set up and get ready. But I guess bottom line is we have a really good board. We're making progress in becoming a, a modern station. You know, the Peg Station almost died a couple of times over the last decade. But we're back and we're making progress and we really hope to become a valuable community resource for the county. That's my report.
Thank you, Ed.
Any questions?
Yeah, there's definitely going to be some questions and comments. Just want to thank you for your participation, continued participation on this, on the Peg TV and everything that you're doing. And I will you for one, I saw the transition happen at the, at our, you know, at the courthouse up there as far as the filming and everything. And want to thank for that project. And yes, we are enjoying it. We are all the right color. It looks good. So thank you very much on all those upgrades that we're able to work out in the courthouse. So I know everybody else would appreciate that. So thank you very much. Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you. Little did you know, you set all that up so we can do this. I have a couple of questions. One is, and I absolutely appreciate the fact that Sam Houston is in the courtroom and helping with all of the camera systems and sound systems. Since you have such a large capital budget right now, what's the possibility of you looking at setting up remote ability to do those things? Because we kind of have very specific dedicated folks that do the camera work. And it, we have to recognize that they have lives too, that they can get sick too. And if there is the ability to do some remote access, that maybe that might make it easier for sometimes to continue the process. And so looking to see, especially at times like this, where if we don't have to ask you to come in, then that would be for the better. And so if we can look at setting up remote accessibility or the sound and video portion of these meetings, I think that would be great.
Okay, well, listen, I think I think our budget would allow us to purchase any, any extra equipment that you would need to allow Sam to remotely come in and broadcast your meetings. We couldn't pay any, any staff time or, you know, any, that would, that would not be a capital expense, but any equipment that might need to help do that, we'd be happy to pitch in.
Yeah, it's all about setting the hardware up so that it's at least accessible for, for us. And I know there was a a slight bump in the road at the last city council meeting as well, where it would have been awesome just to be able to remotely turn it on rather than have to have someone come in, because I think somebody did have to come in eventually to be able to solve that. It's, it's great that we have people who are willing to help out with making this possible. But just looking for, especially in this time that we're dealing with and we're doing a lot of remote activity, let's go ahead and put that on to Peg and see how they can enhance the remote activity as well. And my second question for you is Sling. So I know that you get the one percent from MediaCom. And so even though you're not affiliated with MediaCom, you exist because of MediaCom in a sense. You're on Channel Eight on MediaCom. You're not on, you're not on, on satellite, things like that. And so working with Sling and, and the cost of that, and the fact that I would have to pay MediaCom cable to see Channel Eight, but now I would maybe have to pay Sling. Can you explain a little bit more what that relationship with Sling would look like?
Well, I haven't learned it all myself yet, so I'm not a Sling expert. But Sling will allow us to stream onto the internet. It won't necessarily require you to be a subscriber of MediaCom. And MediaCom's okay with that because they sell internet service too. So we would probably be streaming either onto a separate site, which hasn't been established yet, or you, or to use YouTube the way we are now. Anyway, I'll be hap, I'm going to have to learn this stuff. So I'd be happy to, to tell you all about it once I know.
Nice, nice. Just, just thoughts and questions from your presentation. Thank you for the presentation.
Good question. Yeah. Now, the, the Sling expert is actually one of our other folks that works here is, name's Robert. And he's not here right now.
Okay, any more questions from the board? Supervisor Scott?
I have any questions. Just want to thank Ed for his report and for his dedication to the Peg Channel. Just thank you for that.
Oh, well, thanks, Tina. Okay, well.
And thank you to Denise for stepping up to be the Chair.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, thank you very much, Denise.
My, my pleasure, but Ed deserves all the credit so far for sure.
Excellent. Well, we're, we're going to go ahead and open this up to, if there's no more comments from the board, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. So if you guys can hang around for a minute there and see if there's any questions, we'll go ahead and open the room up. Jake, can you do that for us?
Yes, I will open up the room here. All right, the floor is unmuted. If you'd like to make a comment, please start with your first and last name.
Okay. If you'd like to make a comment about the Peg TV presentation, go ahead and make comment now. All right, hearing none on, in the room, we'll go ahead and bring it back. Carol, do we have any written comment at this point?
We do not have any email comment, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I had a technical difficulty that seems to have resolved, so I'm back with you.
Okay, excellent. All right, here are no comments from the room or from that. Bring back the board for final comments. You know, like we said, Ed, thank you very much. Thank you, Denise, for stepping up there and we really appreciate it. Like I said, it's night and day with the upgrade here in the county courthouse. Well, I'm staying here and we're not even there. In the courthouse, in the courthouse, it's been phenomenal. So thank you very much for, for working on that. I want to thank Sam Houston too. I know he was a big part of having that conversation, getting things done. So would appreciate that.
Sam deserves a lot of credit. He did a great job.
Yeah. And he keeps us online. So, all right, Supervisor Crandall, you have another comment?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you, Ed, for the report. And Denise, thank you for being the Chair. The word spoken like a true Chair, giving you a credit to Ed. So thank you again, both of you.
And I do know that, I just, one last comment. I know every time you come on, Ed, you're always looking for more content. Folks are always looking to, to reach out to you. Obviously, there are some rules and restrictions, but you know, amplifying education is always part of that. That's what the E stands for. And educating our public television audience is always something you're looking to do. So I know if there are folks out there, please reach out to the Peg TV. How can someone get ahold of Peg TV, Ed?
Well.
They can, our website, or they can call in.
Excellent. That's all. Good plug right there. Just wanted to say it. Excellent, Denise. Thank you.
Okay.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, something that just popped in my head. Do, does the public have the ability to upload videos directly to Peg TV? Or is it still a deposit, a C D or U S B situation at the City Hall?
We are about halfway done setting it up so that you can just upload it.
Okay, because I think that will make a huge difference with the
Oh, it'll make it so easier, so much easier.
It's going to be.
With the content, exactly.
Yes. People that can bring content, then it'll just start flooding. I, I personally think. Because people will just be doing it right from their couch.
Then you're going to say stop because you're.
Yeah, we're going to be like, whoa, 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 whoa.
There, there is.
I can only hope, you know, I can only hope.
The, the, I think personally that the real challenge with that is to make sure that the people who want to upload something understand that that what they upload has to be the audio and video have to be good enough quality. The format has to be M P four. And it has to conform with the federal laws governing what can be broadcast, which means that when we receive things like, you know, programs that we haven't produced, we don't know what's in them, then somebody's going to have to look at them before we can put it on the air. And that's going to take some time. So.
Right.
And we might need some volunteers to do that.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for the report today. Keep doing what you're doing, Peg TV. It'll be neat to see a van driving around with the Peg TV logo on the side. So.
Right. You know, I told the Peg Board that I thought maybe we should get an old, you know, an old ambulance and fix it up like that thing on Ghostbusters. You know, with a big, big giant dish on the top and a bunch of lights and things. But they all thought I was a little bit radical and told them no.
We just went for a cargo van and be fine.
Yeah. Well, Ed's of the, yeah, any advertisers, good advertising.
Picture.
People would definitely know.
Okay, well, thank you.
You very much. Okay, moving along to our four point nine item, our one forty-five P M. Item. Second reading, consideration of an ordinance amending chapter twenty-one, article twenty-seven of the Lake County Code pertaining to commercial cannabis. Second reading, cons- consideration of an ordinance amending chapter 21, article 27 of the Lake County Code pertaining to commercial cannabis uh cultivation. Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, so I'm gonna thank uh Ms. Grant for saving my butt on this one. I almost forgot to uh submit this for the second reading. Uh, so thank you, Ms. Grant, for uh helping me out on that. And uh, I will say that there, um, on the memo, I'm gonna uh, I'm going to clarify some of the stuff. We took out the changes in minimum acre size, uh because we wanted to send that over to the planning commission. That'll be on the next item. And then we also talked about um, I think that was the only one that we pulled out. The rest will be setbacks that you'll see in the other item um later on. So again, all we're looking at is the elimination of plant count limitations, because again, let the farmer figure it out and we're not changing the square footage. Uh, the addition of the processing license and PDC, where already uh manufacturing is allowed, which is a higher level of uh activity. Uh, adding the deadline to the water um, water board, um getting your water board permit by, which is now set for October 31st, 2020, or waiting for approval, but it would be set uh October 31st, 2020. Uh, the slight subtle changes to the background checks, uh where you can go ahead and start working. Uh, and then if we find that you failed the background checks, then you automatically have to leave. Uh, again, only five out of the 300 plus background checks that have been done have failed the background checks. Uh, so this is not a, a huge problem. And currently, as we speak with COVID-19 status, zero background checks are being done until the sheriff's office opens up. Um, the changes to the uh security surveillance, uh there was a conversation about the state standard. There is no state requirement for video camera surveillance. Uh, so we are looking at only doing 24/7 while there is cannabis activity happening. And then the last one is the changes to the microbusiness, which allows for the type 10 and type 10A dispensary or retail license, uh which is the real name for it, uh and uh it going along as part of a resort application. That way, it would be allowed for a cannabis-friendly resort to also be able to sell cannabis to its guests. Uh, so again, that's just a brief summary of what we already heard last time. We uh separated out everything we wanted to send over to the planning commission. This is the leftover stuff uh that we have voted on.
Okay, Bruno, uh any more questions from the board at this point? Any comments? Okay, hearing none or seeing none, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Uh, Jake, can you open up the room for public comment on item 4.9? The second reading and consideration of the ordinance amending article 21, article 27 of the Lake County Code uh pertaining to commercial cannabis cultivation. So Jake, go ahead and open the room up.
All right. So the floor is unmuted. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Or use the raise your hand button, whatever. Okay. Uh, Jake, go ahead and we'll go to uh Carol and see if there was any written comments on this item, Carol?
Nothing was received by email, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Anita Grant. I see Anita's got her hand up. Go ahead, Anita.
Thank you. I just figured out how to do that. I'm very proud.
Go ahead.
Uh, okay, I just wanted to, just for purposes of procedure, I just wanted to remind your board that the changes that Supervisor Sabatier reviewed were those changes uh that were approved by your board. Your board approved it at the first reading, subject to those changes. So today, the action would simply be to offer the ordinance. And a roll call vote.
All right, that fin- finishes up. Come to bring it back for board for uh, bring it back to the board um for action.
And uh, Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to offer the ordinance.
Okay, the ordinance has been offered. We'll do a roll call vote.
Do you want me to call the roll?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item, um, moving along to item 4.10, um, our 150 PM item. Consideration of a resolution to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance to amend regulations and development standards for the commercial cannabis cultivation. Supervisor Sabatier?
So uh, in order for us to uh send this to the planning commission, I uh put it together into a uh ordinance to send to the, uh for us to approve, to send to the planning commission to review. Um, I did not change, uh, so let me just explain the uh, the changes that would be on here. Um, we talked about last time the minimum, minimum lot size. Uh, I was willing to change that, but because we didn't discuss on what those changes would look like, I just kept them as they were. And we'll see what the planning commission comes up with, so it's still at two. Uh, as you see also, the setbacks have been dropped down to 30 feet, which is in compliance with fire code. Um, there was also, um, we added public lands at one point uh to the thousand-foot setback from public lands. Uh, I had a lot of conversation with a lot of different folks, as well as some real estate folks, and looking to see if maybe we want to look at dropping that to 200 feet, again, seeing what the planning commission says about that. And then the last one, I already brought to the board last time, letting them know that this would be coming on this um uh amendment ordinance, which is uh instead of putting 100 feet exactly from a setback from waterways, that we would just say go with the California State Water Board, um, uh, their, their policy, because our 100 foot was sometimes exactly right. Sometimes it was above by 50 feet, which I'm 100% sure that this board decided to go a little bit more restrictive, and that's perfectly fine. But on the other one, it was 150 feet at the state level, and we said it was 100 feet. So it was kind of all over the place, and I was suggesting to make it easier, especially now that we have hemp that's following the same water board standards. Uh, and they have less of a uh restriction on use of uh pesticides and so on, that we would also abide by this California Water Board standards uh for this. And again, these are up, uh whether you want to ask planning commission to review or not. Uh, those are just what I am offering for us to look at today, and then eventually with what we decide on to send over to planning commission to review.
Okay, bringing back to the board for comment. Uh, Supervisor Crandall, are you ready to make comment?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, I just saw you unmuted. Uh, any more discussion or comment from the board? Okay, go ahead and uh, Jake, can you open the room up? We'll take the public comment at this point. Jake, can you open the room?
Yes, yes, I will open up the room. All right, the floor is unmuted. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, seeing no hands up or anything from the room, we'll go ahead and bring it back. Uh, Carol, do we have any um written comment?
We do not. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Don't see any hands up, so we'll go ahead and bring this back. Uh, Anita Grant, I see your hand is up. Go ahead, Anita.
Thank you. Uh, just as a, a point of procedure, this is a resolution uh to initiate action by the planning commission, so the action here would be to offer the resolution.
Okay, bring it back to the board uh for action. Supervisor Sabatier?
And I just want to remind for those listening or those who will be watching the video later, uh, this is a um proposal for the planning commission to review, uh not necessarily uh what will happen. There's a few meetings in between uh any deciding factor at this point.
Thank you for that clarification, Bruno.
Other than that, I would like to offer the resolution.
Okay. Yes. Carol, go ahead.
And actually, because my opinion is that those uh acres were not correct in the first place, I didn't want to change them because I, I felt we had decided as a board to move that to the planning commission. I'd like to ask the board here, can we change it to 248 rather than 222? So me, meaning, um, let me see, which one are we on here?
We're on 14.
I was in the consent agenda. I got lost. Sorry.
Yeah.
So right here, we would be looking at type 1A at 2, um, uh, 2 acre minimum for 5,000 square feet. 2A at 4 acre minimum at 10,000 square feet, and 3A at 8 acre minimum at 22,000 square feet. So 2, 4, and 8.
So, Mr. Chair, I heard a motion by Supervisor Sabatier. I did not hear a second.
I, I was uh amending my motion or looking to, looking to amend my motion.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
No.
I didn't, I didn't hear a complete motion either. I thought, I know, you're going to begin to offer the resolution and then had a question for the rest of the board uh to weigh in, so um.
That's right.
Supervisor Scott?
I, I agree with what Bruno has proposed.
The, the 248?
Yeah. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I agree with it.
Okay. I will offer that.
When, when we had the discussion last time, when we were talking about this, obviously, uh, the larger atrages, you know, the 20 acre stuff is where I had my uh disagreement with. I agree with this going back to uh the planning commission. Hopefully, they can have a more in-depth discussion. What comes back to us, we'll see. So, um, that's what you want to propose today, uh, you know, to go back to them. I just want to make sure it's a good discussion and community involvement on this, because we're all gonna be affected by any change it makes on this.
Right. And I'd rather offer them something that I feel is more uh adequate than just 222, which in hindsight is not adequate.
Uh, Anita, I see you have your hand back up.
Uh, yes, sir, just for point of uh process here, since this is a change that is being made after you had public comment, you may want to call for public comment on making this adjustment again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anita. Okay, any more comments from the board? If there's not, we'll go ahead and open it back up for public comment. All right, here none. Uh, Jake, can you um please unmute the room? Uh, the conversation uh was clearly stated that uh we'd like to go, was it 2468? Is that how you did it?
248.
248.
248.
I was doing a cheer there, I guess, 2468. Let's go up, 2, 4, and 8. So, open it up to the room on comments on the changes proposed by Supervisor Sabatier.
Yes, all right. So the floor is unmuted. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action. Supervisor Brown? Nope.
I was just getting rid of the.
Okay.
Okay, so um.
I offered the resolution with those amendments of 2, 4, and 8 for type 1A, 2A, and 3A respectively.
All right, is there a second?
Uh, offering the resolution, we do not need that, so.
Oh, yeah.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott? Supervisor Brown?
No.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item uh 4.11, uh consideration of an advisory appointment to South Lake County Fire Protection District Board of Directors. Um, says click of the board. Um, Carol, know if you wanted to introduce this item or?
Sure, I can introduce it, and then you might want to add.
Yeah.
In um from your communication with the district. And, and so I want to start by thanking the um registered voters who helped me with the specifics for this agenda item. Um, so your board, uh, what you have before you is consideration of appointing a uh director to South Lake County Fire District. This is due to the resignation of Reg Garcia, a former district director who resigned on February 12th. Um, the term of Mr. Garcia expires December 2022. Um, but because the vacancy was not filled by the district within 60 days of his resignation pursuant to government code section 1780F1, the appointment must be made by your board. So the appointee would serve through December 2020, and the outcome of the November general election would determine the next director. Um, and that whoever is elected would um serve the remainder of the two-year term, so that would be the two-year unexpired term ending December 2022. And so you have the application in your packet of Eric Redford, who has been recommended by the district.
Yeah, and I can um, I can follow up on this. Obviously, uh, this is just an instance where we usually don't um, you know, have this come to the board. It hasn't since I've been here, but I reached out to uh Jim Kaminsky, who is the vice chair of the board, and really what I was looking to do was get the background information. Obviously, Carol stated it, you know, they missed some deadlines, and that's why it's ended up on, on our plate. Uh, my conversation uh was to worry about uh whether or not they'd have forum uh problems and other things between now and the end of the year. And uh just looking uh to move in confirmation that uh I thought Jim said he would be on today, and I don't know if, I don't see his name, Jim Kaminsky, here in the room. Because I did have follow-up conversation with uh the vice chair there and um let him know what we were going to be doing today, and let him also know that this would just be uh serving out the rest of the term, and then would have to re-up and run. We would, we would do an election process again uh in, in, uh, at the end of the year. Any questions?
Uh, were you hoping that I would uh make that um, uh, motion for you?
Yeah, when it's time, if someone could pick that up for me, I greatly appreciate that. Bruno, thank you for volunteering. I appreciate that. Um, if there are no more questions from the board, we'll go ahead and um open it up to uh the room and see if we have any public comment. So go ahead, Jake.
Sorry about that. Okay, so uh open up the floor here. All right, the floor is open. If you'd like to make a comment, please start with your first and last name.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close it up. Uh, Carol, do we have any public comment on this one? Any written, email?
We did not receive anything in writing, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. I will uh reach out to Jim. He did say he was gonna be here today, but I didn't see him. Who knows? He may have had some technical difficulties, I don't know, but uh I will definitely let him know the outcome once it does happen, so. We're bringing this back to board for action.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I move to approve or appoint Eric Redford to the South Lake County Fire Protection District Board of Directors.
Second.
Motion and a second. Can you do roll call, please, Carol?
Yes, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do know that we moved item 4.5 to 215, so we'll go ahead and move to um.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just reached out to the treasurer tax collector and, and invited her to come back, so it may take a minute or two to get here.
Yeah. So um, actually, let me go to, I, I know we moved things around today. Um, what I didn't do this morning or uh was do number six, consideration of extra agenda items not appearing on the posted agenda. Should have done that this morning. Okay.
And there are, there are none, too, Mr. Chair.
There, there are none. That's good. Okay, I'll remember to do that after we move through these next few weeks. Uh, so we'll go to item 7.1, our supervisor's uh weekly calendar travel and reports. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much. Uh, so tomorrow morning, I will be hearing a portion of the um public health update on the DOC. Uh, then it looks like we moved our afternoon call with Senator McGuire to tomorrow morning at 8:30. Um, then I have uh multiple overlapping meetings. Uh, I think I have. I think I have another meeting with McGuire later on, so I guess the morning meeting is kind of a setup for that later morning meeting. We wanted to just kind of have a pre-discussion, not a debriefing, but a briefing. Then later on that day, if I still have time, I'll jump in on the Project Room Key meeting. Right now, last I heard, there was either ten or eleven folks that were part of Project Room Key that were at the Lamplighter. And we've been having a few discussions about what's happening there. Later on, I will be meeting, we did have a PSPS meeting last Friday, a subcommittee to write letters to the CPUC and PG&E was created. And I will be meeting with the folks on that committee, which consists of Brock Falkenberg, Melissa Fulton, Russ Kramer, and myself to look at reviewing the letters and preparing those for our upcoming PSPS meeting, which I believe is on the 22nd, if I'm correct. Following day, that's when the Potter Valley meeting will happen as well in the afternoon. We'll be also meeting again with Project Room Key. Friday, I don't have much of anything on my list at this moment in time. Things will probably appear. The 18th, starting all over again with another DOC meeting in the morning, Project Room Key at 11, and a meeting with our CAO, Carol Hutchinson, which has been moved the last two or three weeks because meetings just pop up left and right and we got to take care of things. So we'll see how that goes and if that hangs on. But other than that, that is my current future agenda.
Thank you, Supervisor. So Supervisor Scott?
This evening, I have a seventeen-year-old birthday party. We're celebrating here today. I went to 17, so I'll be doing that. And then it was scheduled to have a Lakeport Fire Board meeting, so I have to check into that. There's no agenda posted, but they have it on their calendar and that's at five. CTA is having a Zoom meeting to try to figure out what we can do to help our, our local restaurants here tonight at six o'clock. Tomorrow morning, I am doing some street outreach helping with the city of Lakeport with some of our neighbors experiencing homelessness. We're trying to get some into programs and working with them. Planning on attending the school board meeting for Lakeport Unified tomorrow at six o'clock. Each day of the week, I'll also be calling into those Room Key meetings at 11:00 AM. And that's about it. Oh, Monday, the 18th, I have a Hope Rising meeting in the afternoon. If you need to reach me, eight, four, nine, four, four, one, four, or you can email me at tina.scott@lakecountyca.gov. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, so tomorrow morning, Potter Valley call. Bruno and I will be on that with Carol and Anita, I think. And then another one at 10:45 concerning the Potter Valley project as well. COVID recovery meeting at 2:00 PM that day, too. So that's all tomorrow. On the 13th and Thursday in the afternoon, we'll be doing the Huffman Ad hoc Tubation Solution Committee meeting from one to four. And then I have on my calendar recovery and reopening. And I think that has to do with Dr. Pace's, one of his, one of his groups. Friday will be the Blue Collar Committee at 10:00 AM. I listed this one on Monday, but I don't know if we're having it that day. I'm just used to it being the third Monday, Lake County Risk Reduction Authority. Not sure if we're having that here. Okay, so then that would be that day. And then, of course, it's the same time as Carol and I's weekly meeting, but we've been adjusting. We've been adjusting fire on that each week. So I think we'll be, we'll be good on that. And then back to the board meeting on Tuesday.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, so I've got some catch-up to do. I was off for a couple of days last week, so I gotta, I gotta load, load up on a couple of calls and emails that I gotta get caught up. I will be at the, on the call for the Blue Collar Committee on Friday. And then Friday night, I'll be, however they're going to work it out, I'll be attending the graduation for Woodland College for a seventeen-year-old that I happen to know that is graduating with her AA, so pretty proud of her. And so I'll be celebrating that with her that, that evening.
Excellent. Okay, obviously finished today. We'll get an agenda review and then whatever else calls are coming in. Wednesday, have the recovery meeting from two to three, obviously all virtual. We're doing that. We also have the DOC meeting in the morning or the call to get updated on things that we're moving forward. On Thursday, right now, I don't have anything on the calendar, but I know something will pop up at this point. Friday, we'll be attending, it is a virtual graduation that's going on around the county. I want to say that to all the seniors this year. I know it's totally unexpected the way things are happening, but couldn't be any prouder than the class of 2020. I have a young man who's graduating in my household and we're going to see what this virtual graduation stuff looks like this week. So just want to send a shout out to all the graduates this year, both in colleges, high school, everything, all the way down to the little ones. It's totally different. Just embrace what is happening now. We'll move through that. On, on Friday, usually had, we changed the Friday meeting to Saturday or to Wednesday, so be on that. Thursday afternoon, I forgot to say, I do have a Hammers for Hope meeting, which I'll be attending virtually. And then Monday, we have the morning DOC meeting. And then later on that day, the Risk Reduction Authority meeting. Just want to, you know, as we did with the proclamation today, it is raining, but fire season will be here before we know it. And we just want to be as prepared as possible to keep that on everybody's mind. So continue with those meetings and then back here on Tuesday. And I don't, I don't think we've missed anything at this point, but just like all the supervisors, meetings, calls are popping up constantly. And I will say during our break that the governor did specifically talk about Lake County and testing, you know, as one of the rural counties. So, you know, excellent work by the board and everybody's putting pressure of local control and also bringing a light to Lake County and our needs. So, good job. Other than that, that's it. We have one more item that we need to go to, our four point five item. And this will be presented by our treasurer tax collector at this point. And I want to thank her for being patient with us on our schedule. And so we'll go ahead, go to item four point five, our 11:30 AM item, consideration of status update on tax defaulted land sales. One fifty, long land sale, one fifty-seven due to the COVID-19 crisis. And we'll go ahead and turn it over. Barbara Ringen, our treasurer tax collector.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I would like to provide the board with a status update for the tax faulted land sale, one fifty-seven. This tax sale was scheduled for May 29th through June the 2nd, 2020. Due to the COVID-19 crisis and executive orders issued by the governor regarding foreclosures and evictions, the State Controller's Office strongly recommended that all currently scheduled tax sales be canceled or postponed. Upon this recommendation, our office has canceled the tax sale that was scheduled for May 29th through June the 2nd. At this time, we are preparing to reschedule this sale for October 2020. Once our office has confirmed the October sale date, we will come back before your board for approval. We are also be working on scheduling a tax sale a little bit later in the, in this next fiscal year, 2021, for March 2021. And hopefully with what we're going through right now, hopefully this will end soon and we can proceed with this, the sale scheduled for 2020. The sale for 20, October 2020 will include all the tax parcels that were included in tax sale one fifty-seven that have not been redeemed. The new sale for March 2021, of course, will have additional parcels, most likely even possibly ones that we will reoffer from the original sale. I hope I've answered any of your questions. Did you have more concerning the reoffer sale and the canceling of one fifty-seven?
No, we're waiting for you just to do your presentation. I'm going to open it up to the board here for questions or comments or concerns. So.
Okay.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to say that we have had some ad hoc committee discussions on these letters that have been received and the actions needed to be taken. I know on the first letter that we received, we kind of had a discussion, but it wasn't until the second letter that we said, okay, this is, this is definitely something that we need to look at postponing or canceling. I'm happy to hear October. That's been part of our discussion since the beginning. And I believe that we were waiting to reconvene the ad hoc to kind of review again where we are and the putting the tax auction back on, I believe was in early July, is where we intended to meet the ad hoc committee again. I'm looking for either Ms. Ringen or Ms. Hutchinson to correct me on that if I'm wrong, but I believe that's the case. I just wanted to add that in there that we are following up on this. And hearing October from our tax collector is a continuation of that follow-up.
All right, thank you for the update. Any more questions from board members? Okay, hearing none. Carol, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chair, we did not get any email comments on this item.
Okay, Jake, can you open up the room, please?
Yes, I will open up the room. All right, the floor is unneeded. If you would like to make a comment, please start with your first and last name.
Melissa Fulton.
Yes.
Lake County Chamber of Commerce. Yes, my question is, why are we constrained to only one proposed sale? And if I understood correctly, in October of this year, why could there not be a sale, one in October, one in November? And then hop into February and March of next year, since we seem to have an overabundance of many, many properties that need to be addressed? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Go ahead, Barbara.
First, when we look at the tax sales, we look at fiscal years or tax years. And so now we're looking at the upcoming 2021 tax year. It takes considerable work and preparation to put on one tax sale, let alone multiple sales in one year. Currently, we're also have reduced staffing and limited hours due to the current crisis that we are in. So at this time, in a, in a normal year, it would be impossible to have a tax sale every other month. We would, it would be best served to have it maybe two tax sales a year, but definitely would not be something we could handle due to staffing and just the time and preparation it takes to put on a tax sale over a multiple, multiple months.
Is there a projection on when the county will, and perhaps this is an incorrect term, but when we might catch up and see a, a huge drop in the number of properties that have grown over these past few years? Is there any projection or is it possible to make a projection for the point in time when when we might have only one year's worth of properties sitting out there that are five years delinquent?
At this time, we probably can't make an exact determination when that will occur due to staffing, for one, is the main issue. And due to also, it takes a considerable amount of finances also to put on a tax sale. Each parcel, probably the cost to the county is, what, five to $600 and multiply that out. So the county, if the parcels do not sell, the county would be, be out that money until the property sold. Or in some cases, the property never sells that was owed for taxes, so the county would have to absorb that, that cost. So, but at this time, we are working towards reducing the number of parcels. I don't know that we'll ever be in a position, at least in the near future, to be only one year behind because not all parcels sell at a tax sale. They have to be sometimes offered multiple times.
Jake, my last question is, in these proposed sales, are we utilizing, and I, I don't recall the name of the company, but are we utilizing the company whose business or profession is conducting these sales?
Bid for assets?
Yes.
Yes, we are currently using bid for assets as our auction venue.
Thank you. I appreciate the answers.
Thank you for your questions, Melissa. Anyone else in the room at this point? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Scott?
Out of the properties that we were supposed to be selling in the next couple of weeks, how many of those properties have already been redeemed?
Well, I believe there's been about 25 to 30 properties that have already been redeemed. We do usually see the majority of our redemptions in the last 30 days. But of course, we've been in our current situation for, for more than that. So generally, I think we've had about 25 to 30 redemptions and I believe it's been close to about $350,000 that we've collected on these properties so far. That's the current taxes and the delinquent taxes combined.
All right, Barbara. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I, I know that one of the reasons that Betty sent us the letter informing us on why they feel it's a preference to postpone or cancel tax sales is due to the displacement of people if they lived in the home. And I think that, I know this is not a decision to make now, but I'm just putting it out there for the future that we try to keep track of the properties we're putting in these tax auctions as to whether or not they have somebody living in those homes. And then also keep track of how many years it's been tax defaulted. Because for instance, there's one of them that's on this list that's been tax defaulted for 17 years. This is not a COVID-19 issue as to why they haven't paid their taxes. And so I think that we should set some form in the future because this may continue when we try it again in October, that we look at doing how, properties that do not have any in them and properties that have passed a certain significant amount of time so that we can definitely say this is not an issue of them not able to pay because of COVID-19. Or else we are prohibiting ourselves from continuing to tackle this really difficult task that we have in front of us. And I think we have to be able to do some of these. And so to have that detail is going to help us in the future. So I'm hopeful that we do.
Yes, we are going to be tracking the parcels that could be affected more by the COVID-19 crisis. Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, this was a report only, right? We don't need to accept, we don't need any action on this item. All right.
Doesn't look like it.
Yeah. So Barbara, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention and reporting. And that will, somebody's doing the music, rolling us out. So that will take care of all the items on the agenda today. We'll thank everybody for being here and obviously stay safe. So thank you very much, everyone.
Mr. Chair, if you and Anita can stay, we'll do agenda review.
Good day, everyone.
Okay, we'll go ahead and join the meeting. For the meeting. Thank you.